First thing on the agenda is call order and then we'll do a roll call. So I guess we will consider the meeting called the order. Does one of you guys on the planning staff want to do the roll call?
Here, I'll do it. All right, Commissioner Stahl.
Here.
Commissioner Hawks.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thanks. Commissioner Perkins is not yet here. She let us know she'll be maybe fifteen minutes late. Commissioner Hartwig. Not here. And Chair Wheeler.
Here.
I don't have the listening. Oh, and Commissioner Sager is not here.
Okay, it looks like we have enough for a forum. So let's go ahead and just keep moving forward here. First thing on the agenda for commission business is the approval of December thirteenth twenty twenty-three meeting minutes, and that is in our packet from last, or that's attached to our agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay.
All right, we got Commissioner Hawks with a second. Any discussion we need on this? Doesn't appear so. How do we, how best we do the voting for you guys? Just all in favor, raise our hands on the computer or thumbs up. What do you want?
Up to you. If you want to raise your hand, we can see all.
All right, so all in favor, let's just raise our hands, give a thumbs up. Make it loud and proud. All right, looks like we got four, four yeses. None opposed. All right, moving right along. We have the public hearing subdivision twenty twenty-three dash zero four. Sorry for the background noise. I got kids here doing virtual school. So start over subdivision twenty twenty-three zero four dash S Kern Creek Estates. Three. We've seen the previous Kern Creek Estates come through. Looks like they're being built out currently, and so this is the next addition to that. So with that planning staff, do you want to take over, give us your staff report, and then we'll get into the public hearing portion after the planning staff gives us their report. For those of you in the, in the Zoom room attending, if you're an applicant, opposed, or for this application, the time to speak will be during that public hearing portion of the meeting. And again, we will open it and call on you at that point in time. So go ahead, planning staff.
All right. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so today we'll be reviewing the subdivision application for Kern Creek Estates Phase Three. The file number is twenty twenty-three dash zero four dash S. Your recommendation will be forwarded to the city council February twelfth meeting. Okay. The applicant is Cedar Ridge Homes. They're located at nineteen zero five Southwest two hundred and fifty-seventh Avenue in Troutdale, Oregon. They're represented by Tracy Brown, who lives at one seven zero seven five Fur Drive in Sandy. All right. This is phase three of their Kern Creek Estate subdivision. The application is proposing subdividing the five point eight nine acre lot into twenty-seven single-family residential lots. In this proposal, they will create a street to give access to the bulk of the lots that will be designated as Street A moving forward. The project is located just east, east of Phase Two. Overhead map is a bit dated, but most of Kern Creek Phase Two is built out. As you can see, the comprehensive plan map, or on the comprehensive plan map, this property is in the R one zone, which is low-density residential. This is also included in your packet, but this is the preliminary plan for the site. As we go through more of my slides, we'll have bits and pieces of this. Doesn't need to be up on your screen. All right. The first of the approval criteria will be evaluated are the R one residential zone, which is sixteen point one six. This code section requires that all lots be seven hundred or seventy-five hundred square feet or larger. The sidewalks for northeast Gilbert, northeast Clayton, and the street designated A must meet the city standards for local streets, while southeast Lawrence Road must meet the county standards, which are different from the city standards. They require an additional seven foot of dedicated right-of-way and a five, or five-foot landscape strip with street trees between the curb and the sidewalk. This code section requires either a mix of housing types or all single-family housing with the proposed twenty-seven lots of single-family residential. This is met. The other criteria in the R one chapter are reviewed by staff when the building permits are submitted. We will evaluate the parking setbacks, building height, lot coverage, facade requirements as part of our planning review of the building permits. The next approval criteria is chapter sixteen point one zero eight, which is the tentative plans chapter. This chapter requires that the subdivision applicants hold a pre-application meeting to be held with relevant agencies to the project. Pre-app was held on January fourth in twenty twenty-three with applicants, the fire district, city planning department, engineering, and public works. This chapter also has a list of items that are required to be on the tentative plans, and staff have found that the plans they submitted have all required, have all the required details of the submittal. Or for submittal. All right, the next couple of slides are for chapter sixteen point one one six, which is the design standards and improvements. This is a bulk of the report. And then the first set is the conformity to the comp plan. As shown before, the comp plan map designates this lot as low-density residential. The application, or the applicant is proposing lots that conform to the comp plan. Next is the performance agreement. All streets, utilities, and other necessary improvements need to be either completed, bonded for, or otherwise assured. The relationship to the adjoining street system. This preliminary plan show that the street on the property will connect to the city's transportation network. Street A will be required to stub at the northern boundary to allow access to the network in the property to the north decide, if the property to the north decided to develop in the future. All right, next one is transportation adequacy and safety. Lots ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, one oh nine, one-ten, and one-eleven only show roughly fifty feet of frontage from the closest intersection. This code section outlines that lots cannot be, cannot have driveways that require backing into the right-of-way within fifty feet of an intersection. This code does allow the applicant to get permission in writing from the city engineer to allow this. The lots will either need to have driveway access on the side of the house, be redrawn, or get permission from the city engineer prior to development. I'm going to go to the next slide, so you can see what I'm talking about. So here, one-ten, one-oh-nine, ninety-four, ninety-five, and ninety-six. They all show between fifty-six and fifty feet of frontage. That's not enough room for a driveway. So they'd either need to have access coming from the north and south respectively, or get permission from the, the engineer, or of course redraw it. All right, back to the last slide though. Land divisions need to comply with the S K municipal code sixteen point seven four. This section requires that water and sewer be provided with the development. Half-streets improvements are needed on southeast Lawrence Road to Clackamas County standards. All blackberry bushes and vegetation will need to be removed along southeast Lawrence Road. All site distances at intersections will need to be calculated by a registered civil engineer licensed in the state of Oregon. Southeast Lawrence Road will acquire seven feet of additional right-of-way that is required by the county. This will create a twenty-seven foot wide one-half right-of-way. This includes a five-foot landscape strip with trees and a five-foot wide sidewalk and the sixteen-foot half-street. Other Clackamas County requirements are outlined here, which will be assessed by city staff and city engineer at the time of plating. Let's get back to this one. Okay. There we go. All right, so to continue with sixteen point one one six. There are public street standards. Northeast Gilbert is going to require thirty-two foot right of, or street improvements. The city engineer said he is comfortable allowing the developer to match the street standards from Phase Two and allow the street to remain consistent going to southeast Lawrence Road. Street A is going to require a thirty-six foot street, full street improvement. This will include a five-foot landscape strip, five-foot sidewalk. These requirements will need to be incorporated into the final design. The code optionally allows the city to require a landscape strip. Southeast Lawrence Road is going to be a sixteen-foot half-street. As mentioned before, Clackamas will require an additional seven-foot right-of-way on Lawrence Road. Street A will need to be extended to the northern boundary line. As mentioned before, this is just to allow future development on the property to the north if the property wanted to develop in the future. And then the last part is city and fire approval needed for final street design and the stub of Street A. This is to make sure that the fire department is able to use the stub as a turnaround and that it meets the standards required by the city. All right, next are the service requirements. For the public utility easements, a ten-foot P U E is required in the frontage along all public streets. Water and sewer, all lots are required to have access to water and sewer services. The extension of the water sewer lines from either Phase Two or coming up southeast Lawrence Road are conditions of approval and will be evaluated with the city engineer and the applicant. Drainage, the applicant submitted a storm memo, which is dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three from all county survey, surveying stating the stormwater basins for the proposal have not changed from the current Creek, current Creek Phase Two report. City engineer will assess this stormwater prior to plating. Lastly, the underground utilities. All utilities are required to be underground, including water, sewer, electric, cable and fire, or fiber. Okay. Next, we're going to be talking about sixteen point one one eight. First, we're going to talk about the continuous walkway system that is required. A five-foot sidewalks, five-foot sidewalks are required on all public streets and within the ten-foot easement along the frontage of the properties. They need to be safe, direct, and convenient. All residents shall connect via sidewalks. The vehicle walkway separations are required, and each street has different requirements due to the classifications of the streets and trying to keep consistent with previous development. Northeast Gilbert will require six-inch-tall curb tight sidewalks to match Phase Two. Northeast Clayton will require a five-inch, or five-foot landscape strip with five-foot sidewalks. The new street designated A will require also five-foot landscape strip with five-foot sidewalks. And southeast Lawrence Road will be held to the Clackamas County standards as described above and in the staff report. Walkway width and surface will be evaluated at the time of building and will be inspected by the city engineer and public works to make sure they're built to our standards. All right, so staff recommends approval with the conditions to allow the proposal to meet all the applicable approval criteria. The fifty-one conditions of approval are outlined in the packet. And I'll summarize them. I'm not going to read them all like I did last time. All right, so general conditions of approval. These conditions of approval are the general city requirements and are evaluated by planning department prior to plating. These include general layout of the final plat, coordination with public works, engineering, county, and fire to make sure all conditions of approval are completed. And then simple things like mailboxes, the plat name approval, things like that. The next set is the transportation conditions. This listed conditions goes over what is outlined by the city engineer for the street and right-of-way requirements. These include completion or bonding for all streets and sidewalk improvements, requirements for all street improvements, P U E and right-of-way dedication and drainage plans. The city utility public works conditions, these are required by public works and regarding underground water and sewer utilities. These include public utility D E Q demolition and W E S requirements and standards. And then the fire district conditions. These conditions are requirements laid out by the S K fire district. These include fire hydrants, access, turnaround, water pressure, and the fire line, fire lane requirements. So the planning commission will have some options. You can approve with conditions as presented by staff, recommend approval, but change, add, or remove conditions, recommend application denial with findings that one or more of the approved criteria are unable to be met. The end.
Thanks, Brian, for that staff report. Planning Commission, do you have any questions at this point in time? I have a couple, but I'll let you guys go first if we have somebody.
Not too much.
Commissioner Carpenter, go ahead.
A fast question. Does that seven-foot right-of-way on Lawrence Road push that whole subset of houses into that fifty-foot driveway threshold problem? Question mark.
No, so that, that it would be from east to west going in. So that's north to south, that, that issue. So it'd be fifty feet from the intersection. So that seven foot is actually pushing towards the houses. Not along with the houses.
Up to that. Thank you.
While we're talking about Lawrence, going back to the Deuce Road Dugan Estates, I believe it was, or whatever the one is over there. I remember there was quite a discussion about roadway accesses onto the county roads. And my only first thought is, is these people of Lawrence Road are county dwellers and used to driving on their, their Lawrence Road. And if we put whatever number of driveways backing onto Lawrence Road, the disruption and/or traffic control change, I guess would be a good way to group it. Is that, is that normal? Is that something we want to dive into? Obviously, if they meet the roadway standards, it's black and white, but is that something we want to dig deeper into?
I'll chime in here. And can you guys hear me normally? Am I quiet?
You're quiet, but we can hear you.
A little bit quiet. Okay, I'll turn myself up a little bit. At the time of the applicant's submittal of this application, our T S P designates Lawrence Road as a local street. We did just adopt the new T S P, which will upgrade when, when it goes into effect, I think later this month or next month. It will upgrade Lawrence to a type of collector. We would be allowed to prohibit homes directly backing onto the street, but since it's a local street. They're allowed to, they're allowed to have those homes back directly out onto that local street and we're, we're actually resolving right now. I think we're in the process of confirming that actually the county does still own that, that full right-of-way on Lawrence, but regardless, the county also classifies it as a local street. And so you know, the county also reviewed the proposal and didn't have any problems with the backing, the backing out onto Lawrence. So while I definitely share those concerns, there isn't a ton that the city is able to require around that. So yeah.
If I'm hearing you correctly, if we, if, if the application was made two or three months later, we could do something about it. Is that right?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay. My next question, if I may, is the fifty-foot distance to the intersections. Brian, you mentioned it in the staff report, lots ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, one oh nine, one-ten, and one-eleven. Could you bring that map back up? Tom, I see you joined us. Thanks for joining us. If you could mute your device when, when you're not talking, that would be helpful. Just to eliminate most of the background noise, noise from everybody else. Okay, so the fifty-foot dimension, Brian, if you could help me, is that overall lot dimension, or is it from the edge of the driveway is that we need fifty feet?
It would be from the, the intersection.
From the edge of the driveway.
The nearest. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes. Yeah, from the beginning of the driveway to the to the intersection.
And then the, the other question is, is this something that we've just decided to start enforcing?
I'm not sure. It's always been in the code, so I'm guessing the prior the prior applicants got permission from the city engineer to do it.
My, my only thing is, is if you look at lot fifty and compare to ninety-four, logic would stand that those north to south dimensions are the same. And I would assume that lot fifty has a driveway on that west side. I'd just like to go through things with logic and make sure that we're being consistent with what we do. So if, if it was allowed on lot fifty, but not on ninety-four, that doesn't make sense to me.
We'd have, we'd have to look back through those, that previous decision.
Okay. I, I don't ever recall this coming up and thinking through like all the Campanella Estates and driving through those subdivisions. I there's a lot of narrow lots near intersections, and I just don't know how they would have got around it. And in my opinion is if, if, is, is Street A, for instance, it's a smaller classification than Gilbert Street, right?
They're all local streets.
They're all local streets.
Yeah, same classification.
Same classification. But, but the roadway width, does that play into it at all?
Not, not in our code.
Okay.
And I will say, my, my, my thoughts on it is that it's not going to be difficult to get that written permission from the city engineer.
Okay. That helps.
And it's, it's a condition of approval to get that, that in writing. So.
Okay.
Ideally, is that, if the planning commission is fine with that condition, ideally what will happen is we will go ahead and coordinate getting that written permission from Kurt before this even comes to city council, so that it's not something that I have to do after the fact. It's you know, included in the approval, in the final decision.
Okay. That's all I got right now. Is anybody else on the planning commission have any questions at this point in time? Looks like Paul, you got your hand raised. Our liaison to the city council, welcome.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I thought that was a good question about Lawrence Road. I understand it's a, a local road now. But given what, what we are looking at to be, I know ideally we would not have driveways backing up to this. Taylor, you'd mentioned that we can't require it. Is this something that we can request? And that's a big ask, I know, but you know, just, just given the, the view of how we want Lawrence to look in the future. I think it'd be worth at least bringing it up.
Yeah, definitely. I think it'd be a big, it would be a negotiation between, it'd be the city asking for the applicants to drastically change their plans, reduce. I'm sure it would mean reducing the number of lots. It would you know, so the city would, the city would need to figure out what, what we would be offering as kind of like a trade for that concession that the applicant would be making. But I agree, it would be, that, that would be ideal because then, you know, we know that there, there are other developments in that area that are probably going to come in, in the next year or two or three. And so that street will get built out and those future developments will get built out at the, the new, I think it's a major collector width. So the half-street will get built out to the major collector width. But yeah, it would, it would have to be a negotiation and the city would have to somehow compensate the applicants for for, for giving us, you know, for making that concession.
Sure. I under, I understand completely there, and I guess I'll leave that to the planning commission and the city to kind of work through that.
Thanks, Paul.
At some point, Lawrence Road is likely going to become the cities and no longer the counties, or will Lawrence Road always belong to the county regardless?
The eastern half of Lawrence Road will always belong to the county. I guess there's, there are ways that we could, there are intergovernmental agreements you can, you can do to to have a city take over functionally take over jurisdiction of a roadway that's outside of its urban growth boundary, but if we don't pursue that, then yeah, the half of the street that's outside of the U G B will always be the counties and the half that is inside the U G B become, becomes the city's upon annexation. And so what we're clarifying with the county right now is whether or not when the property was annexed, was that piece of street also annexed or not? And the county's records, it seems, are saying that it was not annexed. It still belongs to the county. We're in the process of confirming that. Regardless, half-street improvements are going to have to be built with curb and landscape strip and sidewalk. So.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Taylor.
I have one thought here.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was reading the the traffic engineers report on that piece of road, and Lawrence Road in that particular area has a fifty mile an hour speed limit, even though it's sadly lacking for most everything. And you have, and I, you know, it, it bothered me a lot that we're backing cars out with that, with that condition enforced, you know? And it's something that needs to be looked at because if, if in fact you're what you're proposing here is that's what they're going to be doing with kids playing and everything like that. That road is so inadequate in every sense of the word. Something needs to be done with that. I don't know what, you know, what we can resolve with.
I, yeah, I, I guess I would, I would agree on that and I, I think that I'm unclear on what the timeline is. Maybe it got discussed before I jumped on. I'm sorry I was late. With, with any improvements happening on Lawrence Road, but I, I know this keeps coming up, but the, that little dip down in, in Lawrence Road is really dangerous and narrow and it seems like adding more, you know, cars backing out and possibly kids playing and a lot of stuff going on right after people come out of that weird curve on a, on a on a road with a, with a relatively high speed limit is yeah, I, I just don't, I don't understand how we're, we're even going to deal with having a, a small subdivision, another small subdivision of people coming and going on Lawrence Road and using that curve every day. It just seems like we're waiting for something to happen.
I, I agree with you there. The one thought I had, and I talked to an engineer aggression, this was just an offhand conversation I had. I looked at that curve in there and if you look at the Troutdale Road and Stark, the way they, they go, somebody did something that they basically just put two culverts down in there, two large culverts, and basically just fill it. And to make a straight line there, that you could almost do away with that. I don't, it, it might be a simplistic thought of mine, but I'll just look at that. Well, you know, that's probably a hell of a lot less expensive than a bridge there. But.
Yeah, there's like wetland and stuff. I, I don't, I don't know what that would take or whose property it is, but so yeah, something, because. It's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty sketchy turn to be on all the time, and I just think about everybody's Amazon trucks coming to those houses and everything.
What, any other thoughts or uh, questions, planning commission at this point in time before we jump into the uh, public hearing portion? My, I, I have one more um, regarding uh, the pre-app and then the public uh, works comment regarding. Uh, wastewater treatment plant. I mean, it's the, the white elephant or the elephant in the room, whatever you want to call it. Um. How do we feel about twenty-seven more houses coming online? Uh, in the event that. A, the current wastewater treatment plant doesn't get replaced in time, do we have adequate capacity? Uh, in its current state? And is that something that the planning commission has the access or the ability to uh? Even weigh in on?
Yeah, so um.
I, oh, sorry, but Mike, before you get going here, my, my concern is, is that uh, our, our wastewater treatment plant, I'll, I, I know it's a uh. It's a now-type issue. My concern is, is that the timing of it, it's not going to come online nearly as quick as we need or want it to, uh, when it does happen. So that's, that's the premise of this question.
Elena's hands raised. I think maybe she wants to.
Yeah, I, I can, I can a, address that some. So um. The way that we addressed the capacity for the wastewater planning was during annexation. So for the wastewater capacity, this, this piece of property, Kern Creek. As the phase three was already annexed in. It was already considered in the capacity statement that we did in twenty-twenty-two. Um, so. There's the capacity for this piece of property. And even if there wasn't, uh, the engineer, when I spoke to him like two weeks ago, said that uh, there's about nineteen hundred lots. Left of incapacity of our plant. Now DEQ gets concerned when you get to about eighty-five percent capacity, which would equal approximately another sixteen hundred lots. Uh, added to the city. So, so based on our city engineer, we have capacity for this.
Thank you, Elena, and just to be uh, just a little clarifier here. So. We have nineteen hundred more lots of capacity in the current situation, and then an additional sixteen hundred on top of that, or is the sixteen hundred? Get us to eighty-five percent? Is it sixteen hundred of those nineteen hundred gets us to the eighty-five percent? Sorry if you.
Yeah, sixteen hundred of those nineteen hundred gets us to the eighty-five percent, which is when DEQ will be concerned.
Okay.
It's, it, don't we, aren't we already dumping more ammonia? Don't we already have a special permission to dump more? That, than we're supposed to be into the river? I mean, and it, it smells pretty insane on a lot of days. It's just hard to imagine another like.
The, that, that is not, uh, if, that's not a capacity problem. That, that is a process problem. Adding more or having less will not change the impact of that. It is, it is failing equipment. So the equipment for processing ammonia is a biological system. And as a result, it is very sensitive to a lot of different things, including temperature, um, what is put into the system, and. As a result, it's not working well. Uh, we had a couple of years back, which is when we started getting a lot of these. Ammonia notifications from DEQ, the, these exceeding our ammonia is, um, there was something that came through the system. Uh, we weren't able to identify what it was, but something was introduced into the system that caused a die-off of a lot of these bugs. Uh, that do the biological processes. And so we've been fighting that since then, you know, trying to introduce more food or take away the food or. Add different chemicals to, to make these bugs happy. They're, they're kind of like picky toddlers and they'll only eat when they're exactly happy, so.
Okay, um, that's so interesting. Um. But it, would it, wouldn't it make, there's, even if we add nineteen hundred more houses, that's nineteen hundred more houses worth of ammonia that. They wouldn't be taking care of and would be going into the river theoretically? Is that, or is that not how that works?
So uh, it's part of the, yeah, part of the ammonia comes from the wastewater, part of the ammonia is created as part of the other treatments. So. The, the um, it, it goes through like several different processes, and one of the processes kind of creates more ammonia as part of the processing of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Elena. That's uh, insightful and I appreciate the, the history on, on us approving this in twenty-twenty-two and the capacity statement regarding wastewater treatment, so. Um.
Ben?
Yes.
You know, the thing of it is about that treatment plant, no matter what it's doing, if it's doing something that it shouldn't be doing, you shouldn't be adding more homes. You know, whether it's ammonia or it's uh, solids or whatever. You're, you're putting that into a river that has hatcheries on it, and a lot of people recreate on that river, and. I'd hate to be blamed for causing problems.
And the subsequent fines.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we, we are in an MAO with DEQ, which um, has kind of an adjusted level of where we are allowed for. What our system is able to process. So we will not be receiving additional fines. Um. But it is not. I know it seems like a lot, but if you compare it to a lot of other cities, we're, we're really not. Exceeding our limits excessively. It is, it is, it is kind of two, three, four, or five times a year. It's not an excessive amount. And we would probably have trouble. Quantifying it as a reason to uh, to not allow. Capacity, because it, it isn't a capacity issue, which is what. They look at when we're doing. The allow for new uh, lots and subdivision.
Okay. Uh, one question on the, you said two or three or four times a year, uh, whatever the. Quantity was, do we, do we fall outside of that DEQ standard? Is it at high flows uh, times or low flow times?
It is mostly at high flow times. So we're, we're getting a lot of INI, which is infiltration um, and inflow uh. In, in the heavy rain events. And so that's when we see a lot of the issues. Um, we also see some issues when the weather changes. So if you see a significant increase or drop in the temperature. That can really upset the little bugs that do their work and they're not very happy. Um, and so you might see something at, at those times.
Gotcha.
And we've been working, we, we do um, some slip lining. We do a lot of work every year to kind of decrease that INI. By, by slip lining manholes or slip lining pipes um, to, to decrease INI, which happens with our, a lot of our older areas in town.
And does that seem to be improving that INI?
Yeah, we did a, we did a pretty big project um, on the old mill property a couple of years back, and the INI, according to our engineer Kurt, uh, it decreased. From the high, the high rain events from like four MGD to two MGD, because so it cut it almost in half during those high rain events.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Elena. Any other questions? Planning question? Scott, did you have something?
No, I was just saying her comments were good news. At least we seemed to be moving in the right direction.
Yeah. Okay. Well, at this point in time, uh, I've heard the staff report, had a little discussion. Uh, can I get one of the planning staff to read our statements about evidence presented at this uh, public hearing? And then once uh, whoever reads that is done, we will go ahead and invite the applicant and/or their um, representatives up to discuss this.
Yeah, okay, so I can read the statement. Statement about evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the city council must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final evidentiary hearing on the specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford the city council and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter, or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford the city council and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue. Precludes appeal to the city council on that issue.
Thank you, Taylor. All right, so let's go over to attendees. Uh, I see some familiar names on there. If anybody wants to raise their hand there. Um. The applicant and/or their representatives. Let's see, we got Tracy Brown, our first contestant here. Tracy, if you could introduce yourself, give us your address, and then uh, go ahead and explain your relationship to this uh, application.
Sure, yeah. My name is Tracy Brown. I live at one seven oh seven five Fur Drive in Sandy. And I'm the applicant's land use planner, and I was uh, involved in writing the narrative that we submitted with the application and pulling. I guess the various components of the application together and submitting those to the city. Uh, this afternoon, we also have Scott Clayton, who is the developer. Uh, we have Tyler Henderson and Ray Moore of all county engineers. They were the folks that uh, designed the subdivision for Scott, and we also have Mike Art, who is the traffic uh, consultant on the project. So I guess to start off, you know, we want to thank uh. Staff and the planning commission for reviewing this um, application. Let's see, I'm supposed to join as panelist? Is that what I'm supposed to do?
Yeah, that would, then we can see you on video. Or if you're comfortable doing what you're doing, we're fine with that, too.
It caused a little bit of a lag when I joined, so we might lose Tracy for a few seconds here.
There he is.
Yeah, I. So yeah, again, I'm uh, Tracy Brown and the land use planning consultant, and we wanted to thank uh, staff for reviewing this and. Uh, recommending approval. As was mentioned, this is just an extension of the, some of the infrastructure that was created as part of the phase-two development. Um. I, I guess I'll just go through a couple of points. You know, we generally agree with all of the recommendations. In the staff report, and I think at some point I'll ask Mike Art to talk a little bit more about Lawrence Road and that curve and some of the intricacies of that. Um, I did submit earlier today. A um, memo, and I don't know if that got to you all or not. And I can uh, you know, I, I wouldn't mind being able to share that, so I could just go through. And what that memo basically does is uh, just kind of identifies. A few of the conditions that the applicant had some concerns with, and is suggesting some, you know, mostly just modifications or tweaks to those. Uh, recommended conditions. I guess before I do that, one of the items had to do with. The driveway uh, spacing from the intersection, you know, and when I saw that um, recommendation, I, I researched the code. And you know, and looking at the code. I'd, you know, to me, my read of it, it wasn't very clear where this dimension is measured from. It, it just says fifty feet from the intersection. Is that the middle of the intersection, the edge of the intersection? As a, you know, I, I think there was some interpretation by staff there, but it really doesn't say. In the language of that section where we're supposed to be measuring that from. And it does say further in that same section that. Um, you know, let, unless. Another uh, reasonable access to the property is available. So it does allow an out. Um, as approved by the city engineer. And then, you know, in this case, I think we would argue. That, you know, the way the lot layout is, it's really not feasible to shift those accesses points. Fifty feet if we are measuring from the edge of the right way, um, because it would be um, kind of unreasonable width of those lots. So I guess that being said, we're um. Comfortable with that condition. Because it does say unless approved in writing, you know, another access approved in writing by the city engineer. Um, we also wanted to talk about the uh, street standards that are being recommended by uh, staff. And it was our understanding and the engineer's understanding, and when this was being designed, is that the. The local street standard adopted by the city was the thirty-two foot width of paving. Versus the thirty-six foot width, which is being recommended and has been adopted in the new TSP. So it's kind of a similar situation that was discussed regarding the classification of Lawrence Road. Lawrence in the previous TSP and in the county's plan is a local street. In the uh, recently adopted, although yet not fully effective, TSP, um. It has that as a, you know, a di- different classification, but the um, standard is thirty-six feet of paving with the. Uh, planters. So we'd like to. Bring that up as part of our discussion about some other recommended conditions. So I, I don't know, Brian, are you able to share that, or should I share that with them?
Uh, let me pull it up real quick.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. And did, I didn't. Hear if the planning commission saw these. Before the meeting, may not have time to um.
We sent them out, yes. We received that and emailed it to everyone, so.
Yeah, it was just this morning that I sent it to the city. Appreciate that. Thank you. So yeah, so what I'd like to do is just go a few of these points here. Um. So yeah, as was mentioned, um, we generally agree with the majority of conditions that are in the staff report. However, after careful review, uh, there's a few modifications we'd like to uh, request to some of the conditions. Um, the second paragraph of this little memo does talk about, I guess from a uh, clarity perspective. It would really be helpful if the staff report and recommendations. Were categorized into city, street recommendations and conditions versus Clackamas County recommendations. Because if you look at these various conditions, there are some conflicting standards between city standards and Clackamas County. And it really, the list is just a laundry list, and it doesn't really distinguish. Between which of those are applicable to city standards versus Clackamas County uh, roadway standards. And so. We're suggesting that the conditions be categorized with uh, the first grouping of eight through sixteen are fully related to the city streets. And the next grouping of seventeen through twenty-eight are directly from Clackamas County's uh, review and comments. Um, one of our recommended uh, requested condition changes would be resolved if this were to occur, and I, I'll show you that in a second here. So we go to the first uh, our first requested condition, it has to do with um. The width of streets. And so as I, as I talk about in my little memo here, you know, the application was submitted about a hundred days prior to. The new adoption of the TSP, and so based on the, you know, goalpost drill rule. And the requirement that applications can only be reviewed under the regulations. Adopted at the time of submittal, um. These standards of a thirty-six foot street would not apply uh, to the application. So we request modifications to this. Uh, the next one has to do with uh. Basically some details regarding the uh, tangent of the street. And you know, we would like to request uh, addition to that condition. Brian, can you just slide up a little bit? Thank you. That this uh, modification. Um, is, you know, would be required unless otherwise approved by the city engineer. And we've had some preliminary discussion with the city engineer, and he, it was our impression, he was. Probably fine with that adjustment, but uh, without that language in there. He wouldn't really necessarily have the option to um. He wouldn't really necessarily have the option to um allow that to be modified. If you could just slide up a little bit more, Brian, appreciate it. Right uh down a little bit to nineteen there at the beginning, nineteen, yeah, there we go. So this is a condition that, as I mentioned, if the, this is really was written by. Um. The Clackamas County and it really applies to Lawrence Road and so. If, because the conditions are just kind of a laundry list of transportation conditions. And this doesn't specifically spell out Lawrence Road, um, this could theoretically. Be interpreted to apply to all streets such as Street A. And so we just, I think with that, I had suggested some changes to this condition. But with the categorization of the, of the two um reviewing bodies. That would be resolved, I think the condition would be fine as written, then we wouldn't, there wouldn't be a need to change that. The next one had to do, this is just a minor change, um. Uh, this has to do with trimming the bushes along Lawrence Road to ensure site distance. We just wanted to. I guess qualify that a little bit as written, it says removing all vegetation. Uh, within that west side of the road and we would like to just request that the word necessary be added. And so we'd only be removing the vegetation necessary to maximize site distance rather than. You know, there's a ground cover. It could be interpreted that that would need to be removed because it's on the west side and that, that wouldn't be impacting site distance. So it's just a minor qualification for that. And then the next one had to do with a condition thirty-five, just to clarify that this condition. Is applying to the main uh transmission service lines rather than the. Uh laterals that go in to serve. The uh residences themselves or the dwelling themselves. I mean, I, I think it's pretty obvious, we wouldn't want an eight inch uh pipe as a service line to um. The units, so it's just a qualification um of that language. And the next, next one had to do with um. I guess we're requesting this condition. Was uh, I guess puzzling because the, the, the lay of the land out there, it all drains to the south and west. And there wouldn't, it wouldn't really be practical or feasible. To route water to the north and um. I'm not sure if that was the intent or not, or that's a leftover from another application, I'm not really sure, but. It doesn't seem applicable to this application. So like those were the, I guess, the main changes that were um would like to bring up. And have you consider tonight or this afternoon. Um, I think with that, are there any questions, I guess, before I move on? Are there any questions about those? Uh, requested modifications or changes?
Planning Commission, go ahead and ask those questions if you have them right now. Okay.
So I guess with that, maybe I'll ask uh Mike Card. To uh just talk a little bit about Lawrence Road. And uh there was discussion about the speed limit on Lawrence Road and the curve there and so on and so forth. Go ahead, Mike.
Thanks Tracy, Mike Ard with Ard Engineering, I'm the transportation engineer that prepared the report for this project. Um. So a couple of things before I get into the discussion of Lawrence Road, I just wanted to mention regarding the driveway spacing, that there is some precedent for. Having driveways, obviously, that are spaced less than fifty feet. One of the primary concerns that happens is that. If you put a driveway in an area where there's a stop sign on a roadway, you can get queues of vehicles that conflict with drivers trying to back out of their driveways. Um, we don't expect that the volumes on the, these local streets would be high enough to have queues that conflict with those. The other is associated with sightlines and being able to see far enough. We believe that we can do that as well, and for those reasons, we anticipate that the city engineer would approve something that is. Uh, less than the fifty-foot spacing, which is why we're comfortable with the language of the condition of approval as it appears now. Um, as far as the Lawrence Road issue. Uh, I noted that one of you, and I forgot which one it was, uh, mentioned that there is a very high speed limit on Lawrence Road. It's actually fifty-five miles per hour. Um, and, and it's kind of a fiction, the, the reality is that. There is no speed limit that's posted on Lawrence Road, and so it's subject only to Oregon's basic rule speed limit, which says that. You're to travel at a speed that is reasonable and prudent to driving conditions. And that reasonable and prudent speed may be substantially slower than fifty-five miles per hour. But it cannot ever be above fifty-five miles per hour, that's the hard limit per state law. So the reality is that it's a relatively undeveloped road, we don't know exactly how it's going to behave in the future. But we are required to analyze it as if it was a fifty-five mile per hour road. Looking at the roadway cross-section, we can see that there are tight bends just north of the site and south of the site that are going to limit speeds to way less than fifty-five miles per hour. As they get onto this segment of roadway. And for that reason, we are very confident that we can get adequate sightlines. There's a couple of related issues, too. One is. Related to the expectation of people backing out from their driveways and the, the future reclassification of that roadway. What I would say with respect to that is that Lawrence Road. Regardless of what you classify it as, is going to operate with lower traffic volumes than similar roads, let's say. Curran Creek Drive, for instance, which makes a connection to Dewes Road to the north. Has homes on both sides of it and feeds a relatively large area. So that anybody that wants to go out of the city of Estacada toward the north on the highway. Can take that roadway to connect to Dewes and get out of there. Lawrence Road, because it's at the far east side of the city, doesn't serve that purpose nearly as well. And for that reason, the volume of traffic that will be on Lawrence Road over the next fifty years. Is going to be significantly less than what we see on, for instance, Curran Creek Drive. So that classification doesn't mean that there's going to be a lot of traffic there. The other thing that happens, though, that I, I think is potentially a significant benefit of this project is that if we put in driveways. Along our frontage of Lawrence Road, as is shown under the current plan. We need a driveway density standard. To where the state of Oregon can consider this roadway to be a residential road. And if it is a residential road, then the speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour by statute rather than fifty-five. Which is a much more reasonable speed for that roadway in that location. So I think there are some advantages to having the. The uh driveways that back out onto the roadway, I don't anticipate that it would be a significant problem regardless of what the classification of the roadway is. And for that reason, uh, I didn't have a problem with having the driveways shown backing onto Lawrence Road as it is now. And if you guys want to talk about that further, I'd be happy to, to answer questions about that.
I, I have a question to, about something you just said, so are you suggesting that people who live there are going to want to. Instead of going out to Lawrence Road to go to the highway, um. They're gonna go through the subdivision and go, I guess, down to Cemetery and then over, that that would be the. Preferred way to get to the highway?
I would not expect them to take Cemetery Road, no, that they will distribute in multiple directions. And some of it is near term and some of it is long term, so the city's. Plan that shows the reclassification of Lawrence Road also shows the extension of Lawrence Road to connect to the north to Dewes Road. Once that connection is made, the people that live in the immediate vicinity of Lawrence Road probably will take Lawrence Road to go to the north. To get in and out of the city. That connection doesn't exist right now, so as you get to sort of the east side of the airport. Uh, there just isn't a way to connect from Lawrence Road to the north. And for that reason, they either have to go south on Lawrence Road to get down to Copeland Road. Uh, turn in toward the city or out toward uh the next road, I believe is Curran Road. Uh, that does connect up to the north and go around, but there, there are these really circuitous routes and it's just by virtue of the fact. That the street system is not yet completed. Uh, previously, we had an issue where people did have to go clear out to Cemetery and kind of loop around from there. To get out of this uh subdivision, but we have seen. The completion of a new street connection that is on the Curran Creek Drive alignment. Where Curran Creek Drive does connect through to the north now and hit Dewes Road. So it's created one overflow relief valve, if you will. Uh, to the north, we expect that Lawrence Road, when it connects, will create another overflow relief valve, but. The way that people drive is generally going to be whatever is the, the easiest for them, so for people living in this area that are trying to get. Uh, out of the city to the north, it's pretty unlikely that they're going to travel south first. Then go east, which are both directions opposite where they want to go and then go up uh Curran Road. So I do expect that some of them would take uh Curran Creek Drive and some of them would go in toward the city. Uh, and head up from there. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it, it makes more sense, I mean, if, if I was living in one of these houses, I would, I would definitely go out on Lawrence Road, I was just confused as to where you were saying they were going to go, but that. That makes sense, um, and I would also just add that. I, I don't think that Lawrence Road will probably always have. This low of density on it, I mean, I, I don't think this will probably be the last um. Subdivision to develop on this road.
Certainly will not, but when I, when I'm talking about the density, I'm comparing to. Uh, for instance, again, Curran Creek Drive, which has homes on both sides of it and feeds residential areas that distribute on both sides of it. Right now, Lawrence Road is the far east end of the urban growth boundary. So there is no development that is permitted to occur at this kind of density on the east side of Lawrence Road, so even if all of the. Property on the west side of it develops, there would only be half of the. Area to draw from for the volumes of what, as compared to what Curran Creek Drive accommodates. So the, the volumes will be lower overall than Curran Creek Drive well into the future.
Scott, go ahead.
Uh, no, I was just sitting there thinking to myself that, you know, what he says makes sense to me, but. You know, he, he works on the reasonable man rule a lot of time and, you know, unfortunately, reasonable doesn't always happen. You know, when you put kids involved in that area, I'm like, yeah, what's the reasonable man rule for that, you know, because there's no reasonable with kids, they're just going to do crazy things and. And you're gonna have, uh, I don't know, what is it, eight, nine homes back onto that road, and he said it's fifty-five miles an hour, well, you know, you're gonna have people that do that, but that curve. You're right, does slow them down a lot.
Again, that's why I think that it's so important that that twenty-five mile an hour statutory residential speed is something that we can take advantage of here. Uh, so if we didn't have driveways that back directly onto Lawrence Road, that would not be available to us, we wouldn't be able to. To use that statutory rule, but there is a minimum driveway density that once you achieve. Allows you to post it as a residential roadway speed limit of twenty-five.
I like that, that's, I think it's great.
Me too.
Anyway, I'll.
Michael, yeah, Michael, thank you for your uh clear articulation uh of, of these uh, these conditions. Uh, just a quick question, uh, is. Streetside parking permitted on county roads? One thing I do notice in our subdivisions is. Uh, people seem to have more things than what fit a parking lot than, than a driveway these days. Uh, and what is the potentiality, uh, aside all of these other road uh, uh conflicts? Uh, of the potentiality of uh motorhomes, RVs, boats, uh, and cars uh being parked also on this Clackamas County highway? Or street, I don't know if it's a highway.
Yeah, that gets into some complicated issues that uh go outside of my area. So uh, what I can say is that there are definitely standards that Clackamas County has regarding. Uh, what is appropriate for the roadway and they're going to be based in large part on the classification of the roadway. Since Clackamas County classifies this as a local street, my expectation is that they would allow on-street parking to occur. The difficulty that arises is that we get a half-street improvement on Lawrence, and then the question becomes, is Lawrence in its half-street? Plus whatever is existing configuration sufficiently wide to accommodate the on-street parking? And then there's a somewhat related issue of. I- is there an HOA that would apply uh to the area that would create new rules over and above what the city or the county might have associated with the street classification, so. That, that's the reason that it kind of goes uh beyond my pay grade uh a little bit. When you ask that question, there will be space between the driveways. Uh, along the site frontage that could in theory accommodate some on-street parking, my expectation is in the near term, we would likely see some utilization of that. As long as the roadway is wide enough to accommodate that safely and I expect just looking at it uh at a glance that there would be room for that. So at least in the near term, I expect that it would happen. Uh, ultimately, if the city is reclassifying the street as a major collector. That becomes a more iffy proposition because typically we don't associate major collectors with having on-street parking. Um, so there, there become some questions related to what the future looks like as well.
And thank you.
Now, if there's any other questions for Mike. Um, if not, then I'll, I'll ask Tyler Henderson, who's the engineer on the project, just to say a few words and. He's available also to answer any questions.
Thanks Tracy, Dower, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Tyler Henderson with All County Surveyors and Planners, field box nine five five, Sandy, Oregon, nine seven zero five five. Uh, just want to thank the commission members for being here today, uh, we've done a lot of development here in Estacada and are looking forward to putting another subdivision online. Uh, for Cedar Ridge Homes. Uh, I think everything that really needed to be discussed, we touched on. Uh, if you have any general questions related to the engineering, the stormwater runoff or anything like that, I'd be happy to answer those questions at this time.
I have one question, what is the base standard that you, uh, like stormwater drains and stuff, what's the base standard that you're, you're building this to? I don't believe I read that.
Uh, this has been analyzed and designed for the twenty-five year storm event, um. And we're discharging directly into Curran Creek through the uh downstream subdivision.
Okay.
So I guess if there's no other questions, that's uh, you know, that concludes our presentation. Want to thank you again for your consideration and if you uh take a look at those. Conditions, we appreciate that as you deliberate and consider this and we'd be glad to answer any other questions you might have as you. As they come up through your deliberation as well.
Alright. Thank you, if you guys could stand by, just in case you do have any other questions, that would be helpful. Um, do we have anybody else in the uh? Audience that would like to speak on behalf of the application?
Yes, we do, and um, I just want to note, I turned off the Q and A function because I noticed there were some. Written comments coming in that way, but we're not supposed to be taking comments via the Q and A. Um, so I just want to let all of the attendees know, you will have an opportunity to share any comments, um. I guess right now, um.
Okay, so do you have those, are you gonna queue them up?
So, and we received a speaker request from Mary Etheridge, who I see is in the attendees, so Mary, if you would like to go first. We can allow you to talk.
Sure, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, how you guys doing?
Good.
Good, um, would you be able to please pull up the map of the um. Curran Creek. Where they're gonna expand it, it shows in your paperwork from three all the way up to six. Do you have that map that you could pull up, please, that will be, well, it was Scott Clayton Cedar Ridge Homes, but now it's called Hex Enterprises? Could you pull up that so I can speak to that, please?
And when you say three to six, is that the phases you're referencing?
Correct.
Okay, we'll see if the planning staff can bring that up for us.
Okay, thank you.
In the packet and not Brian's presentation, right?
Right.
Okay, that'll take a moment.
Yeah, we'll copy that right here.
Brian, are you pulling that up?
Yes, sorry, I'm working on it, I couldn't find the mute button.
Thank you, I was just making sure all the. Your zoning commissioners know, and I'm sure you've seen that because it's in that hundred and eighteen page packet and then it's um. Where the people online just uh. See where that all is. I know we're only talking about one today, but it kind of has something to do with it.
You know what page of the packet it is?
You know, I can't reference back now, I didn't copy off all those pages, but I read them three times, but no, I'm sorry.
Was it one of the map pages?
Yes, yes, and it shows. Three, which is, you know, the, oh, the extension of two, which is now three. And then going up to. No, that's, it's got to go up and show that, you know, four is gonna be right up next to the airport. The um. LaGro's property. And then you've got five next to that and six is gonna be Marilyn, Marilyn Lloyd's old place, right next to me.
That looks right.
Yes. Yes, perfect, thank you so much. Well, my name is Mary Etheridge and I live um, right on that blind corner. Um, and I've lived here at this property since nineteen eighty-six. And I kind of sound nervous and emotional, but I am emotional about the dangerous road, Lawrence Road. I know I've talked about it before and um, I just believe it's gonna be really worse when this development is appro- is approved. A transportation analysis was done, if you've read that part of that hundred and eighteen page document. It was based on a Highway Capacity Manual, sixth edition. And it said the peak hours AM were ten point three and PM eight point nine on Lawrence Road. And turning on to Copeland. Um, and then it said the top rates manual, five percent go east and they're gonna go down to Curran and go to Snuff and Induce. So leaving Lawrence Road, if you go east, they think that, that the new development, they're gonna head that way. Five percent of the time, fifty-five percent of the time, they're gonna go right onto Copeland and down to the high school. And forty percent will go down through north, northeast Cascadia Ridge. So if you're trying to get out of this new subdivision, you would be going down onto Cascadia Ridge and on to Cemetery. Or now, as it was said today, going out. Curran Creek to and out to Deuce. And this is a prediction from a manual and it's not human eyes on Lawrence Road. And I'm human eyes on Lawrence Road, I can see Lawrence Road from my bedroom window and from my front door window. And my front door and I called members of the Transportation Committee on September twenty-first. Your TSP group and I had them observe the traffic going on to Copeland at six forty-five AM. And I was also on Lawrence, September twentieth, at four thirty in the afternoon. Watching students go down to their football practice and people flying down Copeland Road. Okay, it's fifty miles an hour there at Copeland and Lawrence. But you can see that they're speeding the speed limit, they're excited, they're going down to practice, it's a nice, warm, sunny day. And then in a ten-minute interval, I'm standing on Lawrence Road. I walked down there and there were eight people that pulled from Copeland Road onto Lawrence Road. Traveling from the high school up the hill, so they were taking a left onto Lawrence Road. And they accelerate, it goes from thirty-five and then it goes to fifty, right after that at the junkyard at Moss Hill Road. And then, then they fly onto Lawrence Road, there's always a really quick, sharp turn, everybody's excited, they're turning there. That's a real dangerous spot. And in documents from this subdivision applicant, it is not anticipated that the annexation and future developments of the subject parcels. Will significantly impact the capacity of the city roadways. Anticipated is very subjective. Lawrence Road is a, a narrow as, you know, I love Ben brought that up, several people on the. Planning Commission have said, it is a very small, one-lane road. My neighbors walk with their three kids down there every day. I see delivery trucks go down on that corner and walk. And I walk up and down the road and there are traveling on the road and they are traveling at fifty-five. And they are traveling faster than that and there's tons of delivery people. And there is more accidents than what was in that report. I just, we had an accident last year in October. Somebody, we heard boom at nine thirty at night and somebody went over the cliff, went over the ravine right next to the house. And went into the ditch and that was, again, maybe it wasn't added to the report. But when it's foggy, when people are speeding, you have that blind corner. And they are leaving the developments, Curran Creek to, they are going on Lawrence Road. So it's, it's really dangerous, you guys, I just, I can't emphasize it enough. It, you hear my voice go, but I've seen enough wrecks, I've seen enough broken. You know, um, side mirrors off a truck that hit the telephone poles by my Christmas, our Christmas trees. So, and then I want to point out, I know I'm short of time, so the last of it is you're seeing that subdivision picture. So they've got two going on, three that they're asking for now. And then four buffers up right against the airport. And, you know, you guys want to preserve that airport, I know you do. And so if you've got homes and subdivisions being built all along there, you're gonna have noise. You're gonna have people that are gonna complain because planes fly low and they fly low to get into the airport. And that's just where you're looking at, that's just the approvals that you did, which were great. On the airport subdivision information. And you're looking at a subdivision that's heading that way. So that's all I have to say, please. Please consider that. There's just, Lawrence Road is a county road and as, as Taylor was saying, it won't get developed. Until everybody on my side, all the way down and that's like, at least it's nine homes on. That side of the road up to Lawrence, where the rest of that road will get built out because it's county. And so it's dangerous and people are speeding and it, I count it every day. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Mary, I appreciate the heartfelt uh, testimony on that. Any questions for Mary before we let her go fully? Okay. Uh, anybody else out there in the audience that wants to speak uh, on the application? Looks like we got Heather Stone raising her hand.
I'm allowing Heather Stone to speak.
Hi, I just wanted to back up what Mary was saying about Lawrence being a very narrow road. Um, I know you saying that they're gonna go up the other way, but to go to town, you actually go Lawrence to Copeland. So anytime somebody wants to go to the store or go into Estacada, they are coming from that neighborhood down Lawrence to Copeland. They're not gonna go north to Deuce, even if you connect it to go to the store, that doesn't make any sense. Anytime they're gonna do it, so no, the traffic isn't gonna be reduced that much. If they're coming into Estacada, they come right down the street. And even though we've only been here a year, um, I have seen as they finish these houses, the traffic has gotten a lot worse. On Lawrence and it is people coming down and turning right. They could be heading to town, we haven't asked every single one of them. There's also a lot more people walking up and down this road. It's gotten to the point where every time we want to go through that curve, that little dip-down curve, if you see someone on the other side coming, you stop. So we're already making our own adjustments for safety. And one of those adjustments is, when you get up to there, you slow down and you look across through the trees before you dip down. And if you see a vehicle, you both wait to see who's gonna stay and who's gonna go. And this has become really common to go through that curve. Cause there is, when you get down that curve, if you have two trucks, God help you, because there's no edges on part of it and you're stuck. And you're backing up, somebody is backing up, back up that hill. So I'm not sure how much time was spent watching what's going on, but as a person who lives here on Woodland, who goes through there. Cause we go to the dog groomer on the other side, we've got uh, some other people we know down that street. Every time we're going through there, we're having to watch and stop and be careful. Or you have people who just gas it and fly through and we have to wait for them. So regardless of some of the other stuff that was going on, I feel like there's an issue that's been missed here. We are looking at a road that is getting heavily used and more used as more traffic's coming. And I think that road needs to be adjusted, maybe a bridge put in or something needs to handle the situation before you're adding a whole lot of people. You know, progress is progress, whatever. But I think this road is a dangerous thing and thinking it's gonna stand as is, even with a lower speed limit, is not gonna handle it. When you have people have to stop right now and wait for the person on the other side. Especially if you have a bigger work truck, a delivery truck, forget about it. That's my main point.
Thanks Heather, I also noticed that um, we had, we received like an email, written um, submission of testimony. That I think also came from you. Um, did you want us to read that out loud or do you feel like you've shared um, what you wanted to share verbally?
Which email was that?
From HJ Greystone at Yahoo.
Oh, was I, did I not just cover that or was it something different?
That's pretty much everything you just said.
Was it pretty much the same?
Yeah, you wanted, you wanted uh, some trees, you mentioned trees as well.
I did mention the trees, I'm sorry, that goes back to when um, Michael Ard was speaking, I believe. Because it says you just want it to be reasonable vision, what classifies as reasonable? You know, are you talking about someone's gonna go there in a little sports car and look around the corner and they can see it? Or are you just gonna have someone stand there and guesstimate? Like, how do you pick that range?
Are those uh, visual distances delineated somewhere in a? Uh, ordinance or how, how are those quantified, Taylor?
Uh, I don't know how they're quantified, but those get approved by the city engineer and Mike Ard is waving his hand, so maybe you can speak to that.
Michael, go ahead. Yeah, I can answer that quickly. Uh, it actually comes from the Ashto Green Book, which is a policy on design, geometric design of highways and streets. And what it specifies is a driver's eye height of three and a half feet above the pavement. Needs to be able to see an oncoming driver's eye within the oncoming travel lane at a elevation, three and a half feet above the pavement. And that is the way that I measured sightlines when I was out there. Uh, you'll see in my report, uh, a section where I talk about being able to get five hundred and twenty feet of sight distance to the south. From the, the new extension of Clayton Drive, uh, or looking south from Clayton Drive toward that. Um, I believe the, the one that Mary uh, indicated that she lived on, the blind corner there. Um, so six hundred and ten feet is the sight distance that you generally would want for a fifty-five mile an hour speed. And what I pointed out in my report is that you can't make that corner at fifty-five miles an hour, you would fly off into the ditch. Uh, so the actual speed of people approaching as they're making their way around that corner is gonna be twenty miles an hour or less likely. Uh, but if they're less than forty-five miles an hour, we have ample sight distance to the south. Um, so basically what we would be looking at is setting up a, a virtual driver's eye position. I usually use a cone that I, that I set up that's three and a half feet tall. And I set that cone back from the edge of the roadway by fifteen feet. Because that represents a little bit of buffer space in between the front bumper of the car and the roadway, about six feet of gap there. So that. Truck, cars that are driving by along Lawrence Road aren't taking out the front end of the car. And then another eight feet to represent the distance between that front bumper and where the driver is sitting back in their car at the steering wheel. From that position, they have to be able to see the oncoming drivers in each direction uh, as they approach. So that's the way that it was measured previously for the report, also the way that I anticipate we would measure whether sufficient clearing of vegetation has occurred.
Brilliant, thanks Michael, that's far more technical and in-depth than I anticipated, so.
Oh, I like.
Sorry about that, I love to talk about traffic.
That was perfect, I loved it, thank you very much. I did have one more question though, back to the planner thing, I think I put it on there. They're talking about still drain to the north, draining to the south directly into Curran Creek. I was told by the um, was it the state uh, fishery? That there was a tiny fish in this creek that's under protection. These people spray poisons and toxins in their yard, we're talking draining into the creek, is there a conflict here? Because we have the creek going through our property, there's a whole bunch of stuff that I've been told I can't do because it's tiny fish. Including having a drainage into this creek.
What state, do you know what state agency that was?
I'd have to pull up his name, I, I didn't have that prepared. Um, it was from the uh, I want to say it was the, I had to call him because I want to put a, I wanted, past tenants can't do it. To put a fence for a property over this creek. And uh, the gentleman I spoke to, I can email it in later or something, told me, we couldn't put anything that was touching the creek in the creek. And we had to make sure not to cut anything around the creek or spray anything that was gonna drain into the creek, because there's little protected fish that goes in this creek. Granted, I have seen nothing in this creek. I've seen nothing, but apparently it's there somewhere, so I can't even put up a fence. But um, so when you're talking about taking the great drainage and draining it into Curran Creek, has something changed? Cause I talked to him six months ago. Let me see, I can't. I'd have to pull up who it was, but it was with the state. Environmental Protection, I think it was.
Heather, if you could provide that to planning staff, that would be helpful and then.
Okay.
For the sake of uh, time today, we'll kind of keep trudging along. Uh, but I appreciate that background information and uh, with regards to that.
Okay, that's fine, y'all, uh, when I get it, should I just email it over to somebody?
Yeah, you can email it to planning staff, uh, what's the official email address that you got there?
Email is just planning at cityinvesticated.org.
Okay, I'll do that, um, I'll look it up and get that emailed over, because if that's not the case, there was things I wanted to do, um. Well, unless the building's coming this way and we're moving, but you know, at the time I was trying to build a fence. Like you can't build a fence, I'm like, oh man.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Taylor, do we have anybody else that's uh, wanting to speak?
Um, not that I can see, I don't see any hands raised among the Zoom attendees and um. One more hand raised, good timing, so I'm allowing Carrie Guyer to speak now.
Actually, this is Larry Guyer, her husband.
Okay.
Um, first off, I'd like to say thanks for the, the chance to express my feelings on what's going on. Uh, Carrie and I've lived here, um, gosh, thirty-five years, we moved here. We're at the very end of Lawrence Road, uh, right before it turns into gravel, right across the street from where you guys are putting that Fred Myers in. And, 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 and my concern is, is like everybody else is saying, is the curves. If you guys allow driveways to come out onto Lawrence Road in the condition that Lawrence Road is in now. Um, you know, you've got to admit, you're gonna be adding what, twenty cars a day in each direction through those curves? And we just had somebody drive off the curve, just drove straight off of them. And I have to believe that that was somebody from the development, not, not one of the people or the locals that have been living here for a long time. Drove straight off of it, so my concern is the amount of traffic that is about to get put on this road. The fact that we don't think, and I don't think anybody could come up here and say it's gonna handle it. You know, you bring up the, the Federal Express, the uh, you know, all of the delivery trucks that we have coming up here now through these curves. And it's, it's a danger, that's just all there is to it. You know, before you guys vote, I wish you could all come up here and at least drive through those curves and see what we're talking about. One other question I have is, right next to Marilyn's property that just got sold, there's a road there, who put that road in?
I'm not familiar with Maryland or, nor the road, is it, is it the half-road that goes down into Curran Creek?
Yes, it, it connects Lawrence Road down into the development there.
So that, that was a road that was uh, mandated by, I believe, Public Works and the Fire Department for a secondary access into those. Um, developments.
Okay, so it had to go in.
Yeah, it had to go in and there was much uh, deliberation about it on what it should look like. And should we force them to bond the neighbor's property and do a full street, not a half-street? And so it was uh, it was discussed in, in depth, um, from what I can remember. And, and so what we're left with is, is kind of the, the final verdict on that. Uh, it's not perfect nor pretty, but it's, it suffices uh, what the Public Works and Fire Department needed and wanted. And if anybody else can add to that, uh, feel free, Taylor.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna add that um, it was put in for, it was required to be put in as like a. A utility and emergency access that was not going, that was not to open up out onto um. Lawrence Road. Um. That was the original requirement and then with the approval of. That was the original requirement. And then with the approval of current creek phase two. Some of the city council is very split, but some like a little more than half of the council. Really wanted to see, really wanted there to be public access out onto Lawrence from that street because they were. Because of evacuation concerns, this was all happening around, you know, shortly after maybe the fires. And so that was a council decision to make that become a public access in and out from Lawrence. So I just wanted to add that. Context.
So my, another question I have is there's no stop sign on that street when it dumps into Lawrence Road. How come is that?
I had to venture a guess. It probably dates back to that council decision of opening it up and maybe follow up on Public Works, but I, I'm just going out on a limb there.
So.
Oh, Michael, go ahead.
Yeah. Can I jump in with a little bit? I don't know specifically the history from the city, but I can tell you what it appears happened there. Because it was initially designed with a fire gate, there would be no reason to put in a stop sign there. It's only going to be used by the fire department. And then when the city council decided to open it up. There wasn't somebody that came back and said, hey, let's engineer this and figure out whether we need a sign. It was just, let's take down the barrier. And so the way that it's actually set up right now without a stop sign. As an engineer, I never would have allowed that to happen. It does need a stop sign. And that's actually in my report that stop signs should be installed eastbound on both that existing Clayton Drive alignment and the new Gilbert Lane. Alignment.
Okay. Well, and another concern I have is like you were talking about the evacuation that we had a long ago. We had a wreck not too long ago, right here at the end of Lawrence Road. A car hit the telephone pole and we couldn't come down our road. The only way we could get to our house was from that, that, that road that we're talking about. What, what? What thoughts are put into this many houses and this many cars if we have another evacuation? I don't see that there's enough room for those people to get out. At what point do you say, okay, we just, we can't handle this many cars? Or this many people if there is an evacuation?
I don't have an answer for you, Taylor, Michael. This is more to your wheelhouse. If there is a good answer.
Yeah. I don't have a. A good, I don't have a good answer. I'll just share what I know as part of the staff that. Has to process these subdivision applications. According to the approval criteria. So. Basically the code says that when we're evaluating a subdivision application. To figure out whether or not the city can approve it. We are only supposed to, we're only supposed to consider whatever the code. Whatever the code requirements are. And so for transportation analysis. The, the code requirements refer us to these certain levels of service. And that's what the traffic impact study. If, you know, did, did that analysis based on those, you know, target. Kind of like target level of how the streets are going to operate. Are they still going to? Operate status, you know, satisfactorily, or are they going to fail to meet these targets? That analysis does not include any, anything related to evacuations, unfortunately. And I can see good arguments for why cities should, why, you know, cities, especially like Estacada. Were in an area where wildfire is a concern. There are other types of, you know, disasters that can require evacuation. There's plenty of good reasons why we should be required to consider evacuation needs in certain types of development approvals, but. That is not something where, where we're legally not allowed to consider that when we're reviewing these residential subdivisions.
Wow. Okay. Well, that's a terrible answer, but thank you for that.
Oh, I guess. I don't know if you want me to add a little bit more to that, just to, to give some additional insight, but let me try to add a couple of things to that. First of all, in terms of the analysis that is required, we did look at the intersection of Copeland at Lawrence to see how long it takes for. An average vehicle to turn onto Copeland Road when they're trying to exit this area. And that's something that would factor in. If you're talking about evacuating the area. So based on our analysis with this development in place, we're anticipating that the average delay. For vehicles exiting onto Copeland Road is going to be about 11.1 seconds during the morning peak hour. And 9.4 seconds during the evening peak hour. That accounts for some people that are going to sit there for 35 seconds and others that are going to. Pull up to the stop, see nobody, nobody coming and go immediately. So that's kind of the average expected delay. Because the volumes are so low, we wouldn't expect that there would be a long queue of traffic southbound. But under emergency evacuation conditions, you would see a queue southbound. So basically what we would expect to see is about. Once every 10 seconds or so, a vehicle would be able to turn. Out from the site and onto that roadway. In the case of an evacuation where they're accused, the, the delay actually goes down a little bit because what happens is the car in front goes. The car behind that knows there was no conflict, kind of does a perfunctory look left and right, and then goes immediately. So the follow-up time tends to be a little bit faster. But we would expect that that would be an effective way to get out of the, the city, at least in terms of that intersection. Bigger problem comes up when you get into town and you have all of the cars coming together that are all trying to get out onto the highway. Which is where you have your, your bigger bottlenecks. The other thing that's done to try to. Minimize problems associated with that, both in terms of getting people. Out of the neighborhoods in an evacuation and in terms of having a robust system that responds to emergencies that may include. A fire that blocks the roadway or a construction activity or a crash that blocks a roadway is having. Multiple paths of ingress and egress. And that's why it was so critical to get Curran Creek Road connected to the north to Deuce Road. It's why ultimately Lawrence Road needs to be connected to Deuce Road as well. So it is an area that's kind of on the border of the city and the robustness of the transportation system. Isn't fully there yet. We have the vision for it and we're moving toward it. At this point, we have essentially three good methods for getting out of this area. Which is a lot better than we've done in the past, but certainly we're hoping to do better in the future as we move forward too.
All right. I guess I'm done. I gotta, gotta go. The Starbucks across the street closes at five. My, I guess our main concern is safety. Okay. I know that developers out there need to come out here and they need to make their money and it's understandable. But I just feel like it's time for Estacada to stop and take a deep breath and just look around and see if we really. If, if we can do it, if, if, if infrastructure can handle it, if the roads can handle it. From my understanding, I haven't really heard of any developments that have been canceled or, or denied because of the, any of the. Infrastructure. So again, I'll go, I really appreciate you guys letting me put my two cents worth in and I, please just think about the safety. When you're approving or disapproving these things. You guys have a great night.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. Okay. Do we have anybody else in the waiting room that wants to speak on behalf or against the application?
I don't see any other hands raised on the attendees list.
Okay. And just to be clear, has there been any other correspondence emailed in, faxed, Pony Express or anything otherwise that would? That we need to see before we make a decision on this?
Was there a piece of testimony? I think, I think the only one, other one was in the exhibits. Is that right, Brian?
Yeah, Exhibit seven, I believe it was.
There was a couple of them that came in a little bit later than normal, right? And weren't part of the original packet?
Yeah, one, one of them was Heather who spoke.
Okay.
But I don't think there were any others.
Oh, sorry. The other one was the regarding the airport stuff that you sent us for the next public hearing. So I apologize.
That's right. Yeah, the worksheet. Yep.
Okay. Let's get back here. So if there's nobody else in the waiting room that wants to speak. On this application, let's go ahead and close down the public hearing. From here, we'll open back up the planning commission. Meeting officially. And it's our job to discuss and make a decision. Really have three options to approve straight up with the conditions. To approve and add some conditions or remove and then deny with some findings. And so this. Does this go on to the city council then?
Yes.
Yes, it does. Oh, that's right. You already said that in February. So, so this, this decision goes on to the city council. There'll be some timeframe between now and then. For more public testimony if need be. But at this point in time, we need a motion. We need a second and then we can discuss as a planning commission. Said motion and/or anything else. And oh, and one other thing to note, it looks like since the roll call was taken, we've had Commissioner Sager as well as Commissioner Perkins join us. So we have six. Planning commissioners.
I'd like to offer the option or just. Remind everyone that just for the, for the sake of discuss, in order to open up discussion, we need any motion and then someone needs to second it. And then if, and then that allows you to discuss. And then after you've discussed and gone through the details. You can decide to withdraw that motion if you decide, you know, if it seems like a different motion is, is warranted. So. For the purpose of discussing that list of requested changes to the condition of, conditions of approval. That Tracy submitted and sent, we sent that out. To you all via email. I'm hoping we, I have, I have some things that I could say about some of those. I think some of them are a good idea. Some of them. We might need to follow up with and. I'm not sure we can resolve all of them in this meeting. But it'd be great if we could talk through those. And so. My two cents is that any motion for the purpose of opening discussion would probably be helpful. And then if you want to rescind it in order to. Make the, the final, what might be the final motion, then you'll be able to do that. Hope that wasn't confusing.
Great. Chair Wheeler, I'll, I'll, I think just to err on the safe side, I'll, I would like to motion option two. Recommend approval, but change, add or remove conditions. I think that leaves us open to adjustments. So that'll be your initial motion to allow discussion.
Thanks for that. Do we have anybody second?
Hold on a second.
Scott, I think that was you. Thank you for that. So let's go ahead and discuss.
So Brian, would you want to pull that memo back up on the screen? Maybe, would that be helpful everybody to see? Those requested changes to the conditions?
Yeah, and I'll start. I don't want to stymie this more than. At all really, but I feel like we're getting a considerable amount of, of community. Pushback and discussion and. In, in general with the city and I, and I want to try to be a good neighbor and, and be a good neighbors to those people on, on Lawrence Road. I think their, their concerns are warranted. I used to ride the school bus on Lawrence Road on snow days. We'd stop before the curve and on normal days, we'd go all the way to the end where the gravel starts and the Starbucks is. And so. Very familiar with the curve. And it, and Lawrence Road in its entirety, the intersection of Copeland and all that stuff. So I. Don't believe that anytime soon we'll see Lawrence Road punched through to Deuce Road. But you know, we're, we're all surprised at the development that's happened in the last 12 years around here. So. Never say never, right? So my, my biggest thing is if we, we spent two years on the transportation system plan, developing these standards and, and creating something that's, that's. Made for Estacada. And I would hate. I hate, I hate even going here, but hate allow the, hate allowing this to happen and have nine lots that are but Lawrence Road. And then the next division subdivision north, whatever it is, phase four, five or six. That we change those standards and then those are no longer allowed to back out on the Lawrence Road. I'm a big fan of consistency and whether it's from phase two into phase three and, and four and so on. I, I like things consistent and not just hodgepodge together. And so my, my personal recommendation would be rethink those lots that are but Lawrence Road. To somewhat preserve the county residents of Lawrence Road, but also the safety. Of those people that live in the new houses of Curran Creek three. Estates three. And with that, I'm just going to leave it out there on the table and let that float. So. Everything else I think is, is doable. The 50 foot sightlines don't bother me as you go through a measure. The sightlines and intersections throughout Curran Creek. They're all 36 foot, 33 foot. And so I, I just don't think that's a standard that we can start enforcing. Or it's not that important to enforce with the engineer's waiver. So I'll stop talking. We have five other people here that can weigh in on this and we'll go from there.
I, yeah, I would just. Kind of agree with what Ben said. I mean. I, for, for about a year and a half, I had to go on that road. Twice a week. Every day in that spot is. Really dangerous. It's just, it, it, it just is. And, and you know, it's when, when I asked that question about whether, where people were going to be going, are they going to be going through this sub? It was like, no, we don't really expect those people to go through there. But then it sounds like in the report, I must be misunderstanding, misreading this, the report, but. That maybe, maybe they're expecting 45 people to go through. The subdivision, 40, sorry, 45 or 40% of people to go through the subdivision to leave, which doesn't seem. Like what people are going to do. And, and. I, I just, even with these traffic studies things, you know, you, you have to wonder. What kind of community they, it's an average trip expectations, but you know, when were they made? What kind of community were they for? Are they for a community where? The same percentage of people work outside of the city as work outside of the city in Estacada? Are they for the kind of community where there's. Where most of the people are doing the bulk of their, for instance, grocery shopping or other entertainment stuff outside of the city. What, what are these trips generations based on? It's, it's. It's hard to, to look at those numbers and, and be like, yes, this seems good and safe. When, when everybody here who uses that road is speaking to what the actuality of that road is going to be and, and what they've already experienced in terms of traffic increase. Just from the subdivision that's, that's already been put in. And I, I also agree, I hate to, to, you know, say no to stuff, but I do think that part of our. Role, as I understand it, is to, is, is to. Keep, keep people safe and, and that, that our interpretation. Our role is to interpret whether or not the, the decision that we're making is in, in line with, with. With rules that are intended to, to keep people safe, not just be evaluated purely on numbers. And, and this. The situation, this road just, just seems like we're just kind of being like, okay, let's throw this in here, hope for the best. Let's make the thing and then hope that the, the. Speed limit gets changed or let's, you know, like whatever, it's just kind of kicking the can of safety down the road. And I don't, I just really don't feel good about it.
May I ask, is there anything? To consider that is in violation of code and/or the safety plan? Is there? Is there something that prohibits us from being able to vote yes, based on the compliance of this application?
I think that the two code criteria that are not met. Are two criteria that we. Said would be reasonable for the city engineer to exempt. And they were the. Like the, one of the intersections is not at exactly a right angle. And the other one was the driveways being at least 50 feet from each intersection. So they could. If they were to, those frankly, those problems are, are solvable. It just means they would have to reduce the number of lots. And of course they want to maximize the number of lots. So. If they're, if they're going to keep the same number of lots. Um, if they're, if they're going to keep the same number of lots, then it's, then the configuration they have is, is what's feasible, is what's most feasible. Um, to, you know, most. Get closest to meeting those criteria, but, um, if they removed one or, you know, if they removed, I don't know how many. Lots they would be able to put in that street at a, uh, intersection at a right angle. I'm sure they would be able to meet, you know, make the lots wide enough to have. Driveways and 50 feet before the intersections.
Thank you.
I've got a couple, I've got a couple of questions. You hear me?
Yep.
Okay. When this all goes through. Is Lawrence Road, Rosewood State is a county road? Or is it going to be cities?
The western half of Lawrence Road will become a city street. The eastern half will stay.
What I'm saying is the city don't have any. 55 mile an hour zones. Why couldn't we look into that? You don't speed through cities, do you? You aren't supposed to. And then Nick. No answer for that. I'm not. Well, you, you want to look, look back and answer it later? I don't care.
Are you asking, are you asking if the city can establish a lower speed limit?
Right. Because it, it's part of it's going to be our, in the city, you said. And the city don't have 55 mile an hour zone.
Yeah. Tom, I, Tom, I think you showed up a little bit, uh, late and we talked through some of this, but if, if the. City has, it's following the basic rule of Oregon, uh, right now, and will continue to do so. As long as it's a county road and non-posted, but if we put street or driveways out to it, then we can make an argument. To make it a 25 mile an hour zone as, um. Under the jurisdiction of the city.
So wouldn't we be able to make an argument for changing the speed limit anyway, once this is in here, whether they, whether they back up onto it or not, because this, then it'll. Taylor just said it would be, it'll become a city road. At that point, so. Wouldn't we be able to change the speed limit whether or not there's driveways on it, is my question, I guess.
That, that's my question. Yeah. I don't, I, I know you guys don't have all the answers and. But. You jot it down and look it up later, so.
Yes, we can do that. We can put in the request right now. The county has, um, the county controls. Speed limits. Basically, the county has the authority to. Review and set speed limits in Estacada. It used to be the state's. Authority, but it's now at the county, which is, um, better for us. And I'm, um. Optimistic that the county would agree that that street, we've had conversations with them about how dangerous Lawrence Road is.
Right.
So I'm, I'm sure they would agree that that street warrants a lower speed limit. Um, it's just a process. They have a long list of. The streets that they're doing these speed analyses on, um, so we just need to get Lawrence on that list and advocate for it to get bumped up as high as we can. To get it prioritized. I'll, I'll make a note for us to reach out to them about that, um, this week.
That's all I'm asking is, I've always. Okay, my next question for Ryan. Will you, will you explain to me? What the, what, what your motion really meant? To. If you can do that.
Sure, yeah. Uh, my motion was, is really too, um, faceted. Uh, the first was in order to get to this discussion, I knew I had to put something on the table. And so I chose the ability for us to flexibly make some amendments and move, uh, in any direction that we wanted to. Based on our conversation. So that's why I chose number two. Um, but, uh, secondly, again, I, I haven't. Uh, other than these conditions that I think we're trying to work through that I can see on my screen right now, I just don't see a whole lot of things that. Um, would require us or, or create a no vote, uh, based on the compliance of this application pending. Uh, these suggested changes, which again, this, this motion allows for it.
And I agree with you and that's why I wanted to verify what you said. So. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Are you done?
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Um. My thoughts on this thing were, I kind of agree with Ben. I think, uh, so far as Lawrence Road itself. Is concerned. That we. Considering. The developments that are going to happen in the future and as planning, we're going to plan ahead. That we should require that they follow the TSP to the letter. I mean, you know, I know it probably won't sit well with them, but you know. Frankly, we have to think about that whole road. And this is, you know, just starting on Lawrence Road. We got to start somewhere, so we start here. This is the starting point. And we're just going to require that, and that's not even going to be a question. Of course, after February 27th, that won't be a question. I know they think they can skip through with this, but I don't see a point where that, that would really. Be good for us and be good for the people that live on that road. You know, and it to be consistent, I think is going to be really good because I think that road's going to get developed beyond their wildest imagination. As things move along. And. I think, you know, we start here, you know, this is going to be where we're starting and that's what we're going to be doing with it. Everything else. You know, are all minor things. I don't see anything in here that, uh, like, uh, Commissioner Carpenter. Said, I don't see anything that really disqualifies this application. For me, I, I would probably have to vote in favor of it. Uh, I, I'm definitely concerned about the safety of Lawrence Road. I mean, I pointed that out to start with. And, uh. To, uh. Uh, answer a question, uh. Commissioner Sager point was looking for. If we put. Uh, driveways on Lawrence Road. It kind of forces the county to designate that. It, it's at least that's what I was. Hearing from what the, that the, the traffic engineer was saying, it forces them to make it a residential road. I mean, they have no point because there's already driveways with people living on them. It's now a residential road and you're going to get that 25 mile an hour speed limit, whether they like it or not. And I think, you know, that's something we should force on that road because. You know, until. You know, sometime when Lawrence Road can actually be redone and it's going to need to be redone from. And from one end to the other. Um. The best we can do is the best we can do. Let's, you know, start with the TSP. Move forward from there. You know, and. And build something. Uh, that is, uh, consistent. That's all I got.
Um, I, I mean, I just. I guess I have a question, uh, Taylor. So we, we are allowed to. One of the criteria is. Is that the planning commission can consider is traffic safety. Is that? Correct?
Insofar, yes, insofar as the traffic impact analysis. Demonstrates that it meets this, the like accepted. Levels, you know, um. Expected operation levels.
Does, does it say in the, in our code that the only criteria for traffic safety is just a traffic study that's done by the applicant? Is that? In the code?
Um, it's. It's done by, I'll pull up, I'll pull up the code here. It says that it has to be done by a. Something like a licensed engineer and, um. It lays out kind of the, the parameters. And methodology that they're supposed to use in that analysis.
But they're supposed to use that, but does that mean that's the only thing that the planning commission can consider is that, is that exact analysis?
Um. Well, the pla- the, so state law says that, um. The planning commission and the city count, ultimately the city council, but whoever's the final decision maker. Must only, for residential development, must only consider. Um, the criteria. In the code. So.
Right, but I, I mean, I guess I'm saying, it, it is the code is the only way that we can evaluate. Traffic safety. We cannot use our own eyes or our own experiences on the road, or anybody who lives on the roads lived experience. We have to only use. A traffic study that we aren't really sure what, exactly what the criteria are, whether there's the same for our community or, or whether they're an average community. We just. We can use nothing except a document that the person that wants to make the development. Paid for, is that?
Yeah, essentially. The, and the cities, um, the city reviews the document. The city currently is contracting with GKS engineers as our, um. On-call transportation engineers. They review the scope of those studies to make sure the applicant is. Um, and using the appropriate methodology. Um, and then they also review the resulting analysis itself to make sure that they. You know, their findings make sense. They review things the right way.
But so the, in this particular case, I mean, the thing that a lot of people have flagged is this portion of the road that is. Is dangerous and an unusual. Piece of a road, but what, but the only thing the traffic studies, uh, uh, really applies to is the intersections, which doesn't capture that concern. So. How can, how can we as a, as a public body respond to the reality of that road? If there's sort of this loophole where that, where the most dangerous piece of the road is not. Having to be evaluated by the study.
That's a good question. I don't know.
Hey, what I have a question for you that's kind of. Out there, like a lot of my comments and questions are at times. Um, so that we've established that they want 27 residential lots and, and they. Um. Currently are meeting the R1 standard of 7,500 square foot per lot, right?
Mm-hmm.
There's obviously some, some issues that we, we've come up with, uh, and need a remedy. And you made a mention earlier, what, what can the city do for them to? Like a concession, in other words. Is it, is it? Within the realm of possibilities for the planning commission to make a recommendation that. A, you get your 27 lots. Will allow you to undersize those lot. And, and again, this is just me. Saying something, not a, not a motion, but you get your 27 lots. Um, we don't love the driveways on Lawrence, if, if that's what we deem necessary. Um, the rest of the things we can. You know, make, uh, we can resolve with the engineer. Uh, and then allow them to. Put cul-de-sacs in or whatever smaller streets, uh, within the subdivision that would not allow. Cars backing up on Lawrence Road and increasing the impact on Lawrence Road. You kind of following me?
Yeah, absolutely. As you were, as I think you were. Problem solving that in your mind, I was also thinking about, okay, what if we have them do? Flag lots into the internal street so that they could not have driveways coming out on Lawrence. Um, yeah, whatever, whatever. You could get creative with how to achieve that, but, um, whatever the planning commission's recommendation would be, or whatever the city's request would be. It would be. It would be a request. Um. The city. Because the transportation system plan is not yet in effect. Um, it will go into effect, I think, on February 7th. Um, because it's not yet in effect, and even if it was in effect. Now it was not in effect at the time they submitted the application. Um, we cannot require them to build Lawrence Road. To the major collector standards. We cannot prohibit them from having driveways. Go out onto Lawrence Road. So I, I agree wholeheartedly with everyone's concerns about the safety issues on Lawrence. I think it would be very wise for the city to do what it can. To negotiate a solution with this development, if they're open to that negotiation. Where they don't have driveways come out onto Lawrence and instead they, you know, work with us on some other kind of creative solution. Maybe it's smaller private streets, cul-de-sacs, flag lots. Um. In order to reconfigure this to prevent those driveways from going out onto Lawrence, but it's going to be a conversation. I, it'd be great if we could invite. Their comments on that. I don't know if that's. Something we can do in discussion at this point.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, I was muted there. Is that something we can do, uh? Legally with the planning commission, uh, being open back up and public hearing shut down is, have the applicant come talk again?
The public hearing is shut down.
Would I have to close the planning commission and then open public hearing?
I'd leave the question, you know, unless you want to abandon the question or the motion, we have to abandon the motion, I think. The, the motion either, either is going to be accepted or denied. And then we have to, if, if we don't want to listen to something else. We have to pretty much just table the motion and then go move that way.
Yeah, so withdraw the motion, close the planning commission, open the public hearing. Chat with the applicant, close the public hearing. Reopen them.
Go back to a new motion.
Did you get that, Ben?
Sorry, come back on that one more time.
So I guess it was Ryan's motion. So Ryan would, oh, is Ryan still here?
Ryan had to go take his, uh, children places, so he had to get off the, the call.
Um.
Uh-oh.
Who seconded the motion?
I did. Scott.
I think Scott. Should withdraw the motion.
Um. Okay, I withdraw the motion. Scott was the second.
And then. Close the planning commission hearing, open the public. Hearing.
The, uh, so the planning commission meeting is now closed again, and we're going to open the public hearing. And have the applicant or somebody representing the applicant, please raise your hand and speak to. Um, our discuss, or possibly answer some questions. Let's leave it at that. Tracy or Tyler. Probably near wheelhouse, maybe even Scott or Ray.
This is Tracy Brown. Are you, can you hear me?
I got you, Tracy. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I may need, well, obviously would need, uh, Scott and or Ray to chime in as well. Um. I mean, it, my sense is there would be a number of standards that would also have to be waived in order or reduced. I mean, there's no way to get. The lot count. With 7,500 square feet and have no lots. Fronting on Lawrence Road. So. If, you know, the city is willing to reduce lot sizes, maybe we could talk about it, but if, if not. I don't think it, there's no real negotiation because he doesn't want to lose lots because it does, in fact. Good or for bad, comply with the code. So, um. I guess that would be my general response. I mean. I think we're. Probably willing to entertain that, but. He doesn't want to go backwards, I guess, in, in terms of, uh. What he's proposing. I don't know if there's what your thoughts on that or not, but it's. It may be something that. You know, you all discuss and as you are a rec- a recommending body. And then it goes further. With further discussion with staff before it gets to the city council. I don't, I don't know if that's the appropriate. Way to handle it, but we're obviously not going to be able to come up with a solution. Tonight, right, or today. That's almost. I guess that'd be my general, there's, there's probably, if that's the primary goal of the change. There's probably going to be some unanticipated. Issues that will be ra- that will raise up regarding probably mainly the minimum lot size. Um. That would have to be flexed. And so I guess, does the city have the ability to inflex that? We wouldn't want to have to request a variance and pay extra money to do that. So it's, I don't know. So I guess those are just some thoughts. I don't know if others in the, on the team have any thoughts.
Yeah, I, I'd like to weigh in with a little something. I feel like.
Yeah, I I'd like to weigh in with a little something, I feel like we might be heading toward a dead end at a run. Uh, and the reason that I say that is that if the planning commission and. The applicant agree together that we're going to make some modifications to the plan that do not meet. The requirements of city code, and then we go in February to the city council. We're presenting to the to them a plan that no longer meets code requirements. So i- it seems like maybe the more expedient thing to do here. Is to move forward with an approval with conditions of approval for the project that reflect the current layout. But with some notes in there that say, we also would strongly suggest a rejiggering of the plan. That would allow us to eliminate. Driveways directly onto Lawrence Road, perhaps with some concessions to code requirements, but those would have to be approved. By city council, so city council, when you consider this, as you're required to do. Please consider this option and discuss it with the applicant, and we could work with staff in the meantime to try to flesh out what those. Uh, changes to the code standards would need to be in order to make it work.
I guess I don't understand why we would strongly recommend something and that. That is, uh, instead of just having it be part of a motion, because strongly recommending things doesn't usually. Results in them happening. Um, so I I, yeah, I I wouldn't really feel comfortable proving something that we didn't think was a good idea. Um, and then. Adding kind of like a finger wag about, oh, please do something different. That doesn't doesn't seem like a great way forward.
We may be talking about two different issues here, as I'm understanding you, because. The specific issue that I'm talking about is the driveways backing onto Lawrence Road. Uh, I I understand you have concerns specifically about the Lawrence Road alignment um further to the south from the project. Um, and concerns about the safety related to that.
Um, yeah, I I mean, I have concerns about both and the the driveways. Coming off of that curve, so you know where they are, that they're they're very close to that, to the curve, like that that definitely adds to it.
The driveway is more than five hundred feet away from curves to the north and to the south.
But with cars moving quickly, five hundred, you you move through five hundred feet. Pretty fast, I mean, that's there, there's still.
That that's exactly why the site distance analysis uh discussed the speeds of vehicles coming around those corners. Because at fifty five miles per hour, you're right, that would be too close. But there is simply no physical way for vehicles to go fifty five miles per hour around those corners, either of them. So being five hundred feet away, we actually have ample sight distance there.
It's still, it's still a s- a people backing in and, you know, coming in and out of driveways very. Very close to another situation where people are stopping, trying to go around people possibly backing up, it it's it's. Two snarls in unsafe situations that are very close to each other.
I I think I understand.
The farther the farther people are, I I mean, it's if it was a thousand feet from the the dangerous curve, that would also be. Uh, concerning because that gives everybody more time to get up to speed before they run into the next hazard, which is the driveways, so. Both of these things are concerns to me.
Yep.
Um. And and it it seems like the one, you know, that there's. Significant concern elsewhere on on the commission is is the um is the driveways in particular. I mean, I I have overall concerns about the road, yes, um, but the driveway thing, I don't feel like I would, it makes sense for us to say. Yes, we approve this and then and then try to hope that some subtext of we strongly recommend this can get. Communicated properly to the city council, which is there's not like a. You know, a great, a great track record of doing, um, so I would rather us approve what we mean to approve or or not approve what we don't mean to approve.
And and I think that that's appropriate, the the prob- the dead end that I'm saying that we're heading for is that if. We as the applicant agree to something where we delete the driveways on Lawrence Road, subject to. Um, approval of some waivers that we don't yet have and that really only city council could provide. Then we don't have a workable plan anymore. Um, so that's not the application that we've put forward, we believe that our application meets the standards as they are. Set up right now, or at least the the standards that were in place at the time we made our application. Uh, and for that reason, we believe it is approvable in its current state and that it. And it essentially must be approved in its current state, um, but that we are open to that discussion. It it's just that you're not empowered to make the decisions that would give us certainty to allow us to proceed with that swap. So it puts us in a bind where uh either we go with a plan we know works, or we. Flip a coin and take our chances with a plan that maybe will work if the city council agrees with what you guys thought.
I I I completely understand your guys' standpoint on it and then uh appreciate your feedback and perspective. Um, and trying to work through this, and and at the end of the day, I think the planning commission wants a workable plan and and we want to be. Quote-unquote good neighbors to the the county folks, um, and so. Thank thanks again for the feedback and and we're, I guess we'll talk through this a little bit more and lean on you guys a little bit as as we weigh through this, if that's all right. Um.
As a quick point of order for Taylor, uh, when I withdrew the motion, I withdrew my second. The motion still stands, it just requires us. Think about what I just said.
Okay.
I can only withdraw the thing I I brought to it, so I I drew the second, so his motion still stands.
So. Taylor, how do you, how do you feel about, um? I I don't want to stall this out, um. But I also want to take into. Make sure we're looking at the big picture, not just this particular application, and so how how best we move forward, uh? Abiding by all things that govern us.
Yeah, I would recommend, um. Taking the approach that Mike, Michael R. just described, um. And I'll just share that whether or not I I think that the planning commission. Or that the city council will share everyone's concerns about the safety on Lawrence. I thi- I'm just, this is speculation, um, and I'm anticipating that the city council will be interested in. Making some kind of negotiation or concession to make sure that driveways are not backing out on directly onto Lawrence. Um, and so in order to prepare for that discussion with the city council on February twelfth. Um, we. I am already intending um to follow up this meeting with talking with. The city manager, city engineer, city attorney, um, and the applicants and figuring out. What what could be worked out there so that we can um. Come to the city council meeting, prepared, fully prepared to discuss and show what that. Would end up looking like and what types of concessions the city might be making in terms of reducing the lot sizes. It would be very helpful for us to to be able to say that most or all of the planning commission. Um, supports these. Can, you know, supports this um kind of agreement that we're making to waive some of our code. Requirements in order to achieve this safer street cross section. Um, that would be really helpful to have, and I I recognize why, I recognize why Tara um. Brought up kind of the lack of confidence, both in staff bringing all of those details to the council and. In the council deciding to agree with whatever it is that the planning commission was recommending. Um, but I do anticipate in this particular situation that that. Probably the best path forward for the city, for all those neighbors on Lawrence, um, would be to. Approve this, um. Approve this application with the changes to the conditions that were outlined in Tracy's memo. Um, and include a um recommendation, just like it would be, we would. Put this in as a kind of narrative piece in the recommendation section. Um, that describes that the planning commission strongly encourages the council to um. Consider waiving certain development standards in exchange for um the. Lawrence Road right of way being built out to the new not yet in place minor. Uh, major collector standards and not having any driveways backing out onto Lawrence Road.
Why, why couldn't we add that as a as a condition of our approval, why couldn't we say that we approve this pending a change? Um, that in that the city, the city would need to. Uh, the people that are empowered to to make those concessions would need to make them, but that our approval is pending that there is an agreement made. That allows the applicant and the city to come to an agreement on concessions.
The specific conditions of approval, some of the can, some of the current conditions of approval will change. If they are no longer having driveways back out onto Lawrence, and if the lot, you know, we don't know how the lot configuration is going to change. Um, it's possible that they'll have to create small private streets that would be plotted in tracks and. Um, there's, there's just a lot that could change in in the conditions of approval, um.
Then would we, why would we not? Why would we not have them make those changes and then have it come back to us?
Um, because we have an active land use application in front of us and there's a hundred and twenty day deadline that we have to issue. A decision on that application, and so I think we've timed this so that um February uh twelfth. It might be able to go to the February twenty sixth city council meeting and still meet that deadline, but we're butting up against the deadline. So um, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to, we have to issue a decision and we have to base that decision. On the code criteria or strike some kind of deal with the applicant if we're gonna. Um, if we're going to require something extra, um, we have to give them, you know, we have to strike a deal if we're gonna do that.
And and that goes back to something you had said earlier, Taylor, that the code requirements we can require, but there's something extra we can request.
Right.
And this is the the flag lots or whatever, whatever would be outside of that code requirement, this is coming as a request.
Right.
Okay, I mean, I I guess it's kind of a bummer to get something. With that that so many people have a lot of concerns about without adequate time to. Review it, I mean. And then not really, there there aren't even adequate. Apparently tools that we're able to use to. Evaluate this and we don't have time to turn it into. A proposal that we feel good about, so it's just sort, it's sort of like, why, what are, what are we doing then? What what's, what is this? That's kind of my question. Um, but I that has no answer, I I just, it's pretty frustrating, I I think to to just be. To feel like we were being told that our only option is to approve something that that. Everybody involved seems to have doubts with, uh, uh, you know, more so than the average. Existential development. Concerns that come up every, you know, every time we have a subdivision, this seem, this is some pretty serious safety concerns. And we're, it's just kind of like, well, sorry, the traffic report and the timing, and you just have to say yes, it it doesn't really.
Yeah, I agree, um, and I think that I think that those problems are. Our problems with the way that our land use laws work, um, and the ways that we're required to. Um, schedule and hold these development reviews and meetings. Um, with strict timelines and, um. I think that the serious safety concerns that everyone here seems to share, um. I think that a great solution to that, if we can figure it out, would be to um have the council. Make that negotiation with the applicant and figure out what what we can do to prevent those driveways from. Going out onto Lawrence Road. But in the meantime, we have this, since we're not sure that a solution will be able to be reached there. We do have this active land use application, we're required, the council is required to issue a decision on it. Based on the criteria that apply to it, so, um. We need to, we need to tell them something, the planning commission can recommend. Uh, you can recommend whatever you want, but um. We just need to be able to say they're recommending approval or denial based on these findings, and so if you're going to recommend denial, we need to tell them why.
Let me to, let me fill her remarks in, I'm sure, um, number one, we don't have a forum right now. And and so if we can't get a second or if we can't.
We do have a quorum.
No, we don't.
Yes, we do.
We have, we have four.
Five.
I'm sorry, I don't mean forum, I mean. Uh, Scott was true, so we don't have. Motion, motion.
I see.
So if we leave it that way, why can't we just in a couple of weeks get together with. On a, what is it called? Coming back and then. I didn't fill in here.
Continuation.
Yeah, that's it, is that where we can get it worked out, see, I. I'm, I don't have, like everybody else here, I don't have a problem with the project, but. It's it's like we don't have any authority any way, it's how it's been explained. So while we get the. Get together and figure out if we really want to fight it or not. It's, but Scott's got the the ball, so. That's.
Yeah. Rick, you got anything you want to add?
Uh, well, if if we recommend denial, that goes to the city council. That kind of puts the ball in their court, which you're saying anyway you would like to do. So that they make the decision about the twenty seven, or you know, the lots. And trying to figure out with the developer how to get his amount of lots that he wants. Uh, you get the feeling that most of the commissioners are, and I am too. Are uh uneasy about putting lots out on the street like that, that is going to get reclassified as a uh collector. Street in the future, and. You know, like, uh, Tara had mentioned, I mean, you've got kids and cars and that. Little kids and cars don't mix. I would think it would be a better idea to try to. To get it resolved, but we can't resolve it, so you just kick it to the next level, let the, let the. Uh, Paul, I see you smiling, hey, let the city council do it.
I see where you're going with this.
I mean, I can't see any other, I mean, you know, everybody is very uneasy with this. And so I I would say, planning commission recommend denial, and here's why. Because of these lots, this is the problem we have. And then that can be told to them. To to go to the developers or, you know, approach the developer and see what can be done.
Uh, that makes sense to me, I mean, it seems like. We're asking for the city council to override us either way, and if I'm understanding what you're saying. Why don't we ask them to override us with a denial, which is more, that that a denial seems to. More capture how everyone's feeling than saying yes. Uh, and they can, either way, they're going to have to, we we want them to go, we're wanting them to go around us if we say yes, so. Maybe we should, we should make the determination that's that more accurately expresses how we feel.
And what would you call that, Tara, a denial?
Uh, Taylor.
Yeah, I, oh, Taylor, yeah.
Why doesn't somebody make a motion then?
Well, we're in a, we're actually still in the uh public hearing portion, so. Let's uh, let's jump out of the public hearing and back into the planning commission meeting, and we have, where we have a current. Um, motion on the floor, and we had a second that was withdrawn, so we need to motion that. Vote down that motion. Uh, with uh, with a quorum, and then have a new motion come with whatever you guys deem necessary. None of which I can do as a chair.
Right.
So. You need a second? So you need a second for the motion that's on the floor?
Yep, and then we need to vote it down, right?
The motion that's still on the floor is Ryan's original motion to approve with some changes. We just need a second.
I second that.
Rick seconds it. And since we've discussed, so all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. I have two, three. Tom, are you voting on this?
Sorry, just can you, can you say it again?
So all those approved of Ryan, or approving of Ryan's original motion, please raise your right hand.
Okay.
And all those opposed, now raise your right hand.
I'm raising mine.
We have five. So it voted down five to nothing, denied Ryan's original motion. We have no motion on the floor, we have no second, and now we need a new motion to move forward.
I'll make a motion to. Uh, call for a denial of the present. Uh, applicant's application. And recommend that this go to the city council and possibly. Uh, they can work something out to keep. Those lots that about uh, Lawrence. From having driveways that back out on Lawrence.
And. Uh, before we get a second on that, are you willing to make concessions to lot size for this to be accommodated?
That's not up to us. That, that's up to the city council.
But I think the council would like to know whether the planning commission would support. The council allowing flexibility on lot sizes or other little development standard things.
Okay, uh, okay, then uh, the commission would recommend that uh. There's a possibility of making uh, concessions to achieve this. Uh, given the planning staff's input on that also.
It's a big motion and Scott, is that a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, wow. And this is a motion to deny. Moving it forward to the city council with some uh, development standard accommodations, but at the same time. Uh, the general consensus is that the planning commission agrees with this overall subdivision application. With the exception of Lawrence Road driveway accesses on said lots.
And, and just to be clear, I think it'd be helpful for city council to know that this is not denied based on any. Uh, compliance issues, any ordinance issues, any code issues. This is being denied based on the. Uh, uh, safety concerns that the commission has.
Sure.
Is that, is that?
There's a consensus there, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Easy enough to override if they want to.
Okay. So. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we need any further discussion?
I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm gonna let you all know that um, we will come to that council meeting. Prepared to support the city council and offer a staff recommendation. If the council, if the negotiation somehow doesn't work out and we have to follow just. This original proposal and the current code, um, we will come prepared to. Present these original conditions of approval with the changes that Tracy Brown requested in that memo.
Okay.
It'll be clear that, that that recommendation is different from the planning commission's recommended denial because of the safety concerns.
And I can also uh, act as a liaison, much like Paul does to the city council. If, if the rest of the commission feels comfortable in me doing that and being the spokes mouth for us. Um, I can be there and, and kind of give our two cents in real life if that would be of, of help, so. Anyway, we've talked a lot about this. Uh, let's go ahead and vote on it. So unless, unless there's any further discussion, of course. Tom?
I forgot now, so.
Okay, perfect.
One question for Taylor here. I know that the city has several different lot sizes available. I know there's a fifty-four hundred square foot lot option. Is that not part of the code or is that something that have to be negotiated separately?
Um, the small, oh, I guess. Zones, there are smaller lot sizes. Um. Because the R one zone is what applies to that property, it would still have to get negotiated. So yeah, it, it can. Be negotiated, certainly.
Good.
But um, it just has to, we just have to get it there.
Gotcha. Okay.
Now, Taylor, they would not have to go and get a variance, would they? Cause they were concerned about having to pay extra money to do that.
No, if we're, if the city's making this request of them, we wouldn't then make them pay. The application fee to um, to justify. Doing the things we're asking them to do.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
I, I remember. Taylor, are you going to still check, ke- keep lying on that fifty-five miles an hour zone?
Yep, I've got a note to have Melanie reach out to our contact at Clackamas County.
That might help to, to, for the city council, so. Okay.
Okay, looks like we've discussed. Uh, all those in favor of this uh, recommended denial to the city council, please raise your right hand.
Yes.
I got five and all those opposed, we should have none. Uh, so five oh, going denial to the city council with the general recommendation. Of, of support from the planning commission, just make that known. Uh, and hopefully the application, or the applicant understands our standpoint after we talked through this several times, so. Um, let's see here. And uh, please, uh, Scott, uh, Ray and Michael, uh, Tracy, all you guys. Please lean on the planning staff uh, as needed for any of this, uh, any support. They are there to help. Um, all right, moving forward, uh, we got some more commission business. We have uh, discussing uh, airport follow-up actions. Um, and so this is a continuation, so to speak, of our. Uh, oh, early December, late November um, commission meeting. So uh, go ahead, staff, if you wanna kick this off, that'd be awesome.
Alan, are you there? Yep, there you are.
Yep. Um, so yeah, we wanted to talk with everyone about um, just revisit the conversation. Um, about the airport. Um, did you, were you all able to access the worksheet that I sent out right before the meeting?
Alan, I was. I didn't have a chance to look at it in real depth, though.
Okay, yeah, it's just a, just a series of questions that we wanted to follow up with you all. And um, just get some feedback. Um. So yeah, I'll just go through the questions really quick. Um, I can also wait if anyone needs to pull this up on your screen or get the papers out if you printed them.
You can also pull it up on the screen if it would help to just view the questions.
Yeah, I can do that, too.
I'm printing it right now.
All right.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe uh, another. A good thing to do would be just kind of give us an idea of where we're going. I know that these papers are gonna get us there, but uh. The follow-up and why we're doing this and the, and the background on it, just a refresher.
Yeah, maybe I can speak to that a little bit. Um. So the airport, the airport amendments passed. And at your last meeting, we talked about how. Um, and hopefully clarified what happened at the council meeting where we forgot to make it really clear. That that fifty acre minimum lot size um, was different from the two acre minimum lot size that we brought to you guys. At the first airport uh, hearing. And um, I think we cleared all of that up, or at least for the most part, um, but if you still have more questions about that, let us know. Um. And so now we're at the point where um, we had. We had a few follow-up action items that came out of the airport amendments. For example, we created this new overlay zone, but we didn't have, um, we didn't really have the. Resources or capacity to create, for example, an overlay map or um, figures that. Would. Show, you know, diagrams and other types of um, figures that show the dimensions of those like three dimensional. Imaginary surfaces that um, that kind of revolve around the airport runway and um, that. Can only be drawn by following really precise calculations. Um, and so that's something that we're probably gonna need to hire an engineer for or a surveyor. But um, that's one of the things. The other thing that came up was um, throughout this process, there've been kind of, there've been. Questions and issues and testimony that have come up that have. Uh, pushed us toward including more properties in the airport zone and that have also pushed us. Away from including more properties in the airport zone and that have made us question, oh, actually, maybe. Maybe the only property that needs to be in the airport zone is actually the runway property and all these surrounding properties can just be um. Protected by the overlay. So there were just some remaining questions that we needed to um, parse out now that we have the actual zone. Created. Um, and I can't remember the other one. I don't know if I'm. Uh, I can't remember off the top of my head, but um, what we wanted to do today was look at that list of follow-up action items. That we promised we would do over the next year and check in with you all to figure out. Um, kind of what are your concerns and priorities as we move forward with these things? How involved do you wanna be? Um, I guess that question really only applies to the, the overlay, the creation of that overlay map. Um, and then, yeah, so what we did was we, we put this in your agenda for today. We also created a worksheet out of these questions so that. Um, as we're talking about this, you can follow along, jot down. Um, your concerns or your thoughts or whatever and um. We will ask you to. Send those to us. If, if there's anything that we don't end up capturing verbally today, please send us your. Um, notes on that so that we can feel confident that every, you know, we're on the same page with the planning commission about. How we want all of these follow-up action items to go. And then moving forward from this meeting, we'll figure out what's a good timeline. You know, do we need to have. A joint meeting with the city council before we get too into the weeds, probably. Um, so we'll have to look at what the schedule will look like, but this, these are things that we will um, plan on working through over the course of. This calendar year.
So as far as the timing of this initial, actually go, Alan, if you wanna dive into your part now, that's fine. And then we can talk about timing of what needs to happen on. January seventeenth and then move forward from there.
Well, really just, we just wanted to kind of go through these questions with you one by one. We can jump around too. Um, can you actually still see the worksheet on that? I just moved it on one of my screens. I wanna make sure you can still see that.
Yeah, we can see it.
You can, okay. Um, so yeah, thank you, Taylor, for all that background. Um, but yeah, we just wanted to go through um. These questions and just kind of pose them to you, get your feedback. Um, I'm gonna be taking notes as everyone talks and we're recording this, so I can go back and get, get. Um, any details that I missed, but we just wanted to get a feel for how you feel. About each of the um, the issues that's facing the airport now that the TSP is. Going to, or is adopted and will go into effect, just the kind of lingering questions and, and issues that we have with that.
One question I have that, uh, we've kind of beat around the bush a little bit on was, have, have we actually made contact with the person or persons or. Uh, organization that owns the airport?
As far as I know, the city, the city has not. Um, I don't know if anyone even has met the person. Who lives around there. Any conversations that we've had with property owners around? The actual runway property have only had contact through their paralegal or through the property management people. Um, so I, I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any contact with the city or anyone else that we've talked to has had with that, with that owner.
They receive, they just would have received um, notice of the land use public hearings, but otherwise, no.
Interesting. I can give you some of my perspective on this, but I, I've looked into it a bit. And since this is a privately held airport. It, it. It, it doesn't meet, you know, a lot of standards that you would have, you have to follow if you're a municipal or something like that. So basically, this thing breaks down into two things. If you wanna preserve the airport, you need to create an airport operations zone. And that is very specific. It's just the runway, the taxiway, hangars or anything used for maintenance. That's it. In the, in that particular designation, what they, what they uh, state that, you know, hey, nothing can be built to obstruct that. You know, and then beyond that, the next layer out would be a safety zone. Of course, you're flying aircraft. And you need to have egress, then you need to have, you know, uh, you know, takeoff and landing zones and uh, safety and, and clear. Hopefully clear away from uh, uh, development.
Okay, so that second part is adopted and we, the city has that now.
Yeah, if that's, if that's happened, then you can also stipulate in that, that, you know, no building can happen in that zone. I mean, you know, you. You can, that's, that's in the code or not, but you can just say, hey, you can't build within the safety zone at all. Nothing can be. Matter of fact, you have to make sure everything, all the obstructions are out of the way. Of course, the height requirements and all, everything else that has to go with that.
Exactly, yeah, there's, there's stricter height requirements there than there are in the, in the, some of the surround.
Beyond that, though, I mean, beyond that, you know, your, your safety zone there, then development can happen. But you have to decide what type of development you want. And I, I, I kind of, you know, those people have bought into the idea that that's kind of an exclusive area around there. And I get that, you know, that's fine. Uh, you know, two acre, that's why the two acre lot idea came in. Cause you know, now they have places, I know some of those houses have hangers built into the houses and stuff. Very nice, you know, but they spent a lot of money to do that, you know. Yeah, you know, all the way around that airport, you, you know, that, that will be fine, you know, as long as it didn't, you know, you know. Bother the safety zone, height requirements or the, the airport operation zone. Pretty simple, you know, it doesn't have to do more than that. And then beyond that, then you can go back to your R two or R one or whatever you're doing. You know, beyond that two acres, it can be whatever it needs to be, you know, up to the urban growth boundary and you're fine.
Yeah, so everything surrounding us are one at this point.
Yeah, now, and it comes into question, noise ordinances and stuff like that, that. They go on that you can do things with, but I don't, I don't see where that, they don't really launch that many planes out of there. You that, I think that's a big problem. But the other thing you can also state too in this thing that I think is interesting is you can also designate it as a. Strategic utility. Resticated. And in the strategic utility, you know, uh, it has to meet a couple of really small standards is one, you know, for emergency response. Which is certainly needed, you know, in case we have a wildfire or something like that, you know, a place where we can land planes and take planes off and maybe helicopters or something. We can, we can put fires out, cause that seems to be a problem around here from time to time. Or, you know, evacuate people. Someplace where you could land those sort of, sort of things where evacuation of people go, you know, and things like that, you know. Um, strategic utility is, you know, it's not really anything more than a way of looking at, you know. It's something that we can grow with. And if you look at strategic utility from the standpoint that. Over time, you can permit traditional use of maybe a bit more of that property for. Uh, industrial purposes or training purposes or whatever you got, you know, somebody wants to, you know, fly cargo in and out of the Estacada Airport, which I. Being a private airport, I don't see that happening, but you can do things like that, but it would be up to the city to determine whether or not that was of interest.
Right, so, so what you're talking about are the standards that are included in the, in the airport base zone that was also. Um, established with alongside the, the safety and compatibility zone. And that outlines exactly what is allowed there and it seems. Like city, like council was pretty happy. Like city, like council was pretty happy with, with what we have in there. There are no industrial uses. Some residential uses and then, and then of course airport related uses and then some kind of, I think, government. Kind of loose uh kind of loosely defined government uses that would be allowed to as conditional, but um. Yeah, I would invite you to look in that and see if, if there's something else that you would suggest be included in that. But yeah, that, that is soon to go into effect along with the T S P and in that overlay zone.
Yeah, because that, you know, that all makes sense to me, you know, and then, you know, one, we got to protect the landowners around it. And two, we still have the, the auspices of urban growth, it's going, within the boundary, it's going to happen. This is that airport. Happens to get right in the middle of urban growth boundary, you know. I'm sure the gentleman that owns that property won't be too excited about any of that, but. But the other thing I also put on top, you know, what's to say that uh he decides to file an application before. At, at any point to, to develop that until R one or R two. I mean, is there, there's no real way to stop him, is there, if he wants to do that with the.
You could submit an application to annex and reason, that's true. I mean, it's not necessarily likely to get. Passed. Uh, I think that there's grounds for not passing it based on council's uh. Council's policies, comp plan policies, and now the. You know, the uh, the standards that are going into effect, but um, but yeah, you're right, he could, this person or entity could. Submit applications today.
And you'd be up against it, you know. I think it's good that we have something like that available to us because there certainly is call for it.
Does anyone else want to add to that, or should we go just kind of like? Move through the, the prompts. Move through the questions.
We don't have to, I don't think we listed these in any particular order, so it's really flexible. And if there's, if there are things you guys want to discuss that aren't on this list, by all means, um, bring up anything you want to talk about. Related to the airport stuff.
Question is, uh, does the airport zoning? And I use that term, quote unquote, does it have to include? Anything adjacent to or within a distance from the runway, or can it be like? The airstrip proper is a, is a zone, and then we have the, the buffer zone, we'll call it, just for lack of a better term. That is anything adjacent to.
Well, there's a buffer built into the base zone. I believe this made it into the adoption that's two. Taylor, was it two hundred feet from the runway? There's no. Was it no residential use?
Two hundred feet sounds familiar. And is that, and that's kind of how we got some of those properties with split zones, right, Alan?
No, properties were split zone before. That's just the map. It's existed. For who knows how long. I don't know, maybe since the. Nineteen eighty, yeah.
So, but I think to answer your question, Ben, um, the city can draw zoning lines wherever it wants. So if you, if you're thinking like, actually, it only makes sense for the airport zone to exist. Up to two hundred feet from the runway, you could, you know, we have properties that are, that have multiple different zonings on them. Throughout the city, so you could have that main runway property, which is a huge wonky shaped thing. Um, you could have the airport zone only apply to a rectangle around the runway and then parts of that property would be outside of the zone.
I'm going to say it makes things complicated to have parcel split zone, but this isn't a normal. Use and maybe split zoning would be appropriate in this case, but um for normal. Like development review. Cases, split, split zoning can be complicated.
I was thinking more along lines of uh. The, the delineation of, you know, we have the airport proper and that's, sounds like what some people want to preserve and make sure stays around. Uh, and then we have the, the obvious residential uses around it, and so. You know, do we have a certain zoning requirement for the airport landing strip? And then the buffer around it, yeah, you, you can't, still, still can't build within two hundred feet of the said runway. But at the same time, you have two acre minimum or, or R one or call what, whatever you want, but it's a, you fall out of that because it's not. The runway.
Right.
Or the, the taxiways or whatever's deemed important.
Yeah, so we kind of, we kind of tried that approach when we proposed, when the city proposed. Zoning all the properties except that one fifty nine acre property, like rezoning all the surrounding properties is R one, and there was. We had a lot of feedback from property owners. Um, that they did not want that um for various reasons. I mean, the biggest being that it. Seemed to them that it would incentivize subdivision and, and development um of the properties and then eventually. Of the airport. I, I don't know that that's. A realistic chain of events where that's happened, but um, that was the feedback we got in the, in the, yeah, that was the response that we got for that. Um, not to say it's, we couldn't approach it differently or. But yeah, I. Uh, just to, yeah, just as a reminder.
Yeah, that's why it would, it would be interest, it would probably be. Interesting to hear. From directly from, I mean, I don't know if this is feasible, but if we could. There aren't that many surrounding properties. And if we could talk with all of those people and find out which property owners would want to be included in the airport zone and which would not. Think the council would be interested in that. Um, it'd be interesting to see if there was a majority one way or another. Sorry, but also, um, I think the planning commission and city council have, you know, you. You are all sort of charged with thinking about not only what. Not only what individual property owners want, but also um. Thinking really long term, you know, what the city might look like twenty, forty years from now. What types of development patterns. Seem like they would make sense in those areas. Um. That's, that's what the comp plan map is supposed to, is supposed to be doing.
Can, can I ask, what, can you explain, so um. Right now, you said they can annex and. Apply for, for a change in zoning and it wouldn't be an airport anymore? I was, I'm confused which property was being talked about.
Well, I, I think we're talking about the main, the fifty nine acre, like the, the.
Okay, that Pete.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's adjoining uh city limits right now. It's adjoining a parcel that's. Or a couple parcels that are within city limits, so it would, by the code, it would be allowed to apply for annexation.
Okay, and then how, how would that change things with the airport? Or it wouldn't?
I mean, it depended on what the intention of the owner was. I mean, I would imagine that they would annex in order to subdivide, but you could also annex in order to. Um, hook up to water or sewer. Um, this is, it's, it's totally hypothetical. This is a total.
They wouldn't, they no long, they would no longer annex in order to subdivide because we just adopted the. Minimum fifty acre. Lot size.
Right, I think the conversation was they could. Just rush in one before that goes into effect on February seventh. Yeah, hypothetical.
I guess I'll just, since I'm talking, say what my, my thoughts are, I don't. It, it's, it's a little bit, some of it's a little bit confusing to me. My, my main concern is. The air, keep, preserving the airport, I don't really have a lot of feelings about what happens. Around it, what those um. You know, if, if, if those are R one or whatever, whatever. People think is good, as long as the airport, it's just that space is preserved in the absolute minimum that we need to have. Around it in terms of. Height requirements and safety or whatever is, is fine to me, and I don't, I don't think it'll ever have the, the kind of traffic to become, for anything to be a noise. Issue. I live right next to an airport and sometimes you hear stuff, it's not more if there's fires or trees to be harvested or whatever, but it, it's. I don't, I don't think that'll ever be much of an issue there, so it just seemed, it, my, my personal concern is, is for long term is the airport itself. And whatever, you know, whatever other people think is good around it is. I think other people might have, have stronger feelings or better information than I do about that.
Rick or Tom, you got anything to add? Rick, I think you're still muted.
In listening to Scott and, and his research that he's done, I think that the uh, the safety zone. That will become part of the overlay, is that correct, Taylor?
That is correct, yes. Airport compatibility and safety overlay zone, that's what got it, that's one of the things that was adopted. There we go.
Okay, so, so that's going to happen.
Yes.
Okay, so with that information, then maybe we could proceed from that point.
Okay.
You know, I mean. The only way you can make good decisions is with good information as much as you can get.
I, I agree, that's why I, I kind of thought the engine, bringing an engineer, because, you know. Other than, you know, preserving the airport. You know, the land beyond the safety zone or your overlay zone, you know, where you got their, their operations zone and then your safety zone. And anything else beyond that, that's whatever the city wants it to be, you know. Depending on, you know, it, it basically just falls into, okay, you know, how are we going to develop that so far as property owners and stuff, you know? The two acres was a minimum because I thought that one whole side is all two acre lots and I'm going, okay, you know, those people bought into the notion that. They have two acre lots there and they spent a lot of money and a lot of investment of their time and stuff, and so let's protect that for them. They, they kind of like that secluded feel there. But, you know, on the opposite side, there's all kinds of mixed lot sizes and everything else, and I don't know. Uh, they can, I feel they can do whatever they want to with that property. I don't care. I mean, it, that's up for them and, and what's, what's available to them. They can.
Yeah, so on that east side that you're talking about, Scott, so there's just four, four smaller lots over there. One of them's split zone, but the other. Three are around two acres as well. Um, and then the rest, like, all the way between. The airport zone properties and the urban growth boundary, those are all zone R one or designated R one. Those are all in the county. So they're still subject to county. Um, but yeah, were they to annex at some point, then they're designated R one at this, at this time. So they would be able to subdivide to the level of.
As long as they were free to follow their will, I'm good with it, you know, that's the way I feel, you know, if they want to. Divide it themselves and work with the county on that or whoever they need to work with, that's good, I'm all good with it. As long as we just, we, we edge out that little airport space and the rest of it is whatever, whatever it is, you know.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, I mean, one of the questions that we wanted to get at was whether or not we. Would propose rezoning any of these smaller properties as something else. Or offer up the opportunity for those owners to rezone. Maybe without charge, I'm not sure how we would approach it, but. Yeah, all this is on the table for discussions. We just wanted to get your feelings for this. So this is, this is good. This is good information, what you guys are giving us right now.
Why would you not want the charge support? Because basically they're doing it for a business purpose, you know.
I just threw that out there. I'm just saying if, while we're doing a, if, if the city were to propose a rezone, maybe we would. Uh, that is what we had proposed originally when the city had proposed rezoning all the kind of adjacent properties. As our one is the city was just going to do that, it was just going to take care of that. So that's why I just threw that out there. We wouldn't, city wouldn't have to do that, but. That's just maybe a.
Throw the baby out with the bathwater.
An idea. But that's a good point.
Hey, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna pay the.
You're muted.
He's not muted, I can hear him.
Oh, really? Oh, wow. Okay, sorry. Okay, now, now you're back. I can hear what you were saying.
All I really said is that, you know, why throw the baby out with the bathwater here? You know, if they want to rezone it, that's fine, you know, that's up to them, but you know. I think a lot of those people bought that property with the intent of having something special, you know, a little bit. That's fine, you know, they can do what they want to with it, but I don't see why we should get in our way, especially when the urban growth boundary calls for. You know, whatever density they call for, and eventually that density can be realized. If that's their wish, you know.
I think uh, one thing that'd be helpful for me is to see maps of, you know, and talk specifically about. Specific properties, and I don't know if that's something for the next meeting. However, this looks, but moving forward, you know, we can go through specifically and put that two hundred foot overlay. Of the T S P. Adoption and then, and then we can start whittling away at things we need to talk about and things that are outside of the scope of this conversation, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that. I just, uh, can you see my, my screen, the, the map now? Yeah, this is the comp plan map. It's kind of a wide screen. I'm trying to see if I can. Maybe zoom in a little bit more on the airport. There we go. So that's, I mean, this is the area that we're talking about. Uh, I don't know if this helps, um, I can also get. Ben, if you don't already have a copy of this map, I can get you a copy of it and.
No, I, I, I got one, thanks, Alan. And when I, when I look at this, it just looks, and, and these are conversations that you and Taylor and Ryan and I had. It, it just looks a little odd in the shape of it. Um. Obviously, we got the long north to south runway piece, and then we got bits and pieces of some properties and entirety of others, and so. I, I would just kind of like to see generally cleaned up and, you know, if. May, maybe it's not on the comp plan because it's not relevant, but, you know, put that overlay on there and make it an understanding that, hey, you can't develop within this two hundred feet. Uh, beyond that, it's either the airport zone or it's a R one or whatever the, the comp plan designation is. And just kind of clean it up top to bottom and, and make it make sense for the average user, I guess.
Basically, that basically would solve a lot of problems where you say, okay, that, this is what it is, and there's where you can go and here's where you can't go, and that's the end of it, you know.
And one, one bit of information, I think that uh, the planning staff dove into with the county was. When this was uh, originally developed beyond an airport and then the residential uses was, and I can't remember if this was. Said to everybody, so I apologize if it's redundant, but the, the reason the two acres came to be was it's own. Was it R R F F five? And they said, as a general, um. Almost like a, a, a planned unit development like we did with Campanella Estates, for instance, we said you can go below the five acres. But, and this is the county saying this, you can go below the five acres, but as long as there's an average of five acres per lot. You can put some two acre ones in there, and then you have your fifty nine acre one that makes up the difference in that overall average.
That is what happened with that, that property. I believe that was in the nineties. They allowed for that, exactly how you described it, Ben. Um, so yeah, that's why there's these three and two acre parcels, um, and then the fifty nine, which, yeah, which balances.
Total amount of land divided by how many, how many divisions are in it.
Yes, exactly.
And that's why it is, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
There were, there were some thoughts of the H O A had established it and then the county requirements and now, and that, that's the, the nuts and bolts of it, and so that. And that might be the basis of this map is that maybe that was the original property, is that weird shape and. Everything just kind of gets moved forward, planning commissions and planning staffs, and all of a sudden, here we are forty years later going, what the heck?
Yeah, I think that's probably what it was.
Rick, uh, looked like you raised your hand. You got something?
My little hand hit mute.
Well, uh, this helps and then, I, I don't need to add much more than other than just. If we can clean it up in any way and make it more user friendly, that's my biggest thing.
Okay, okay, um. Yeah, so, I'm just looking at some of the questions maybe we haven't really touched on yet, so we're going to plan. Or we're going to hire a super surveyor engineer to draw. The, um, the overlays on that we've been talking about, like all the surfaces, the approach, the. I forget what they're called, but yeah, the imaginary surfaces, and we are wondering if planning commission would like to be involved in that process. Like our development of those maps and figures, or if you. If we have your blessing to go ahead and hire an engineer to, um, to work with to, to take care of that.
I, I would think if an engineer's what's required, then I think we need to go down that path.
It certainly would clean up a lot of legal issues that could possibly arise from all of it.
Sorry, my computer is freaking out, I just got a really weird sound, um, could you repeat what you, what whoever?
Oh, I, I just said, I just, I think, you know, hiring a professional is an intelligent idea, and certainly would, would. Be on our best due diligence part, I guess would be the way to put it.
Yeah, okay.
Diligent, you know, and try to protect ourselves legally, so hey, we have an engineer, this is what we, this is what was required, you know?
Yes, that is, and that is the plan, okay, okay. Would any of you like to have a joint meeting with the council to talk about any of this? I mean, we can report back to you, we can give you updates. But is there anything further that you would? That you'd like a discussion planned with council or anything like that?
I think you might want to contact the people in that area, you know, and, uh, if we can come up with a brief outline of what we're planning on doing with it. So they understand what they're saying, you know, and. And their input, of course, would be, uh, important.
Okay, yeah, that would be the minimum for sure.
I think, I think the council, as long as they're kind of kept in the loop and we're walking in March step, I don't think there's any reason for a. A joint meeting at this point in time.
Is there any special kind of outreach that you would like to see us do? I mean, besides like a, you know, letter sent. I mean, in, invitation for a town hall, anything like that?
I don't know, I, I don't know if the average, what, how, what the average rank and file person in Estacada would, would think about this, because basically. You know, it's just us projecting the future, you know? Well, again, you know, why not? I mean, you know, you can put out a general announcement, but I don't think I'd go overboard with it. I think the most important people to get in there are the people that are actually, uh, affected by it.
Right, yeah, so like a targeted outreach then, okay.
Targeted outreach, and then you can put a general, just a simple general statement out there, and if they want to attend, they attend, you know?
This is kind of new territory for us, Alan, so you're.
Me too.
I know it seems like pulling teeth, but, uh, we're, we're feeling our way through this, uh, in the process, so.
Wow, I appreciate you. Yeah, we had to learn, it was a steep learning curve. Luckily, we had good tools, we talked to some good people. The Department of Aviation, um, helped us a lot with like. Template language for the, our base zone and overlay, so that was, that was a big help, but yeah, this has been, I mean. We're just, uh, we're figuring this out ourselves.
I know, I, I spent two days, two days reading their code, the code requirements for this thing through their, through their website, it was quite handy.
Yeah. Anything else? I'm looking over their, our questions that we were looking to get answered and.
I think one thing would just be try to reach out to the main property owner there and see if.
Oh, the main property, yeah, okay.
Yeah, see, he may not, uh, he might not appreciate, appreciate any of this, because I think he has other designs for that property. But, but speculation on my part.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to say, but, but, very possible.
If I was designing this myself, this is just an offhand comment, designing myself, I, I. Other than the amount of value people have put it in, put into it so far. This would probably be better in an industrial zone than where, where it is stationed right now. At this airport, you know, something connected to the industrial zone, that. And that would be a much easier process for you to just, you know, designate it as part of the industrial zone and. With its set of rules and regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fortunately, that's not.
Yeah, that's not the case.
Maybe it'll be the new Fred Meyer site.
The longest Fred Meyer in Oregon.
Well, I, I hate, I hate to tell you, first you gotta convince Fred Meyer they want to do that, you know?
Who wouldn't want a Fred Meyer on a hill? It's a beautiful view.
Yeah.
Might not be enough space for him, I don't know.
That's true.
So I just want to check in on the time, we've got a little over ten minutes before some of our staff have to end their day. And we probably want to figure out what, what you all want to. Carry forward to your next meeting agenda?
What's, do we have anything coming up?
And I believe there are two, um. Two land use applications that are scheduled for March, and I don't think we currently have a February meeting scheduled. Since there wouldn't be any land use applications.
Okay. Good, uh, maybe after. Be- between now and March, if the planning staff could just follow up with us on, uh. Uh, last subdivision application we just went through earlier in the meeting. Let us know the verdict of it and, you know.
Have a meeting in, in February and talk about some of the other many, you know, thi- things that come up in planning commission, I don't know. Just an idea.
Anything in particular, Tara?
I mean, we're, we're, for instance, in this, in this, in today's conversation, it came up, you know, what are, what are our. Ability, it's, or it comes up kind of often, what, what can we approve or not approve based on the code? And there's, you know, there's frustrations in how we can and can't be responsive to the community and how, how we can and can't make decisions that, that. Seem reasonable, and it's, sometimes it's down to state. The state, and sometimes it's down to, oh, well, this code says this, and. I don't want to, I don't want to add, you know, a meeting if this, the staff's probably like, awesome, let's not have a meeting in February, but me, but, you know, sometimes there's these bigger picture things or. Code changes or whatever it is that, that we could talk about that move us a little bit out of being a zoning board and more into being a, a proactive. Entity, I just, I always, I, I think that's interesting, but I'm also fine to have a month off, whatever, whatever people want.
You mean a planning workshop?
Yeah, so you know, there's, there just seems like there's a lot to talk about or, you know, other, other things that we can do, but, um. Again, I don't want to, I don't want to, if people need a month off, it's, it's obviously not something urgent.
I mean, are planning commissioners allowed to set their own meeting without staff around? Like, as long as some kind of quorum? As long as quorum is met, or?
Meetings happen, I mean, their regular meeting is, um. Their regular, they're sort of expected to meet on their regular schedule, so, um. I guess I, I sort of misspoke when I said there's no planning commission, commission meeting scheduled for February yet, that, we just didn't, don't have anything. For your agenda for February, so if you want to meet in February, which is your normal schedule, that's.
I would suggest that we schedule it. And if we, if this, that, can't come up with something for us, we can sit there for an hour. And workshop type thing. Sounds like a joke, but it really, really not.
That sounds reasonable.
So.
Yeah, so.
That's the way I look at it, you know? If staff gets more than, than, than is over two hours, I mean, it's two hours. If they don't, we just hang out for an hour. They can even bring the pup, no, just kidding.
If nothing else, at least you can have, you know, you can say, hey, the planning commission's meeting on the day, and you know, any public out, you know, we could just sit there and listen to public comment, you know? About what's going on and see if we can hear what they're thinking, you know? Catch their pulse, if you will.
That's true.
Yeah, we could call it a catcher pulse, so, you know, hey, come on in and talk, you know? Maybe you, maybe you get more than three minutes. As long as you don't repeat yourself too.
Yeah, if you, if you do want to have a dedicated, like, listening session. Um, and have us advertise that, that's. Fine and good, but we, we would want to know, we'd want to, you know, put that on the agenda officially, otherwise you all, you do always have the public comment. Portion of your agenda where people can speak for three minutes. So.
Let's, let's keep that meeting on the, that date on the calendar, and then maybe we can kind of rough draft something a little workshopy, uh. I'd like to put up some bumpers, because otherwise we might be. It's a big conversation that could go a lot of different ways.
Are we allowed to communicate on the email list about like maybe, maybe putting together an agenda, is that, is there something to do with quorum, why we can't all? Talk on email, or what's, what's the deal with that?
Yes, you cannot all email together. Um, but you individually can email Ben and. Or, or planning staff, I think.
Okay.
Technically, technically, it's supposed to be, you email the chair what you want to put on the agenda, but. This commission works a little bit differently than the other ones, so it really doesn't matter, if you email Ben or you email us, we'll get it on.
Okay, got it.
If Clackamas County would run in, or Clackamas County or the state, uh, any of their planning people and come in and, you know, present something to us, you know? Uh, I, I guess we'd have to come up with a topic for that, then to think about that, you know, come in and just talk to us about. The way they're saying things. You know, how that pertains to what we're doing and. I don't know how to phrase that properly, obviously.
Yeah, there are resources like that, little like. Workshops that could be, that could be done, I don't know if we could schedule something within a month, but, um.
Sometimes they might want to come out and just talk to us, maybe not, who knows? I know it's short notice, but hey.
Let's, uh, let's see where this goes, and, uh, if you guys have any. Topics, email planning staff or myself, and I will get it to planning staff, and then. Maybe in, uh, next couple of weeks, we'll see what comes of the agenda and, and make sure it's posted in due time and all that stuff.
Sounds good.
That's all right?
Okay, sounds good.
Um, I, one thing we do need to hit on is the parks and rec, uh, S D C portion, so maybe. Maybe we could use that as the nucleus of the meeting and just recap where that lands at this point in time.
Yeah, and just a reminder that the city council is gonna be, um. Discussing that at a really high level, we're kind of going to do a similar thing that we did today with the airport stuff, where we're just asking them. You know, hey, remember these parks issues, the planning commission and Parks and Rec Commission were working on it, how do you, the council, want us to move forward on these? They're going to be discussing that on Monday night, so if any of you want to attend and provide any of your comments, that'd be totally welcome.
I was kind of interested in this last, uh, application, we. Just looked at how that would pertain to S D Cs and our parks. You know, because basically this, it's such a small development that they really don't contribute, that I can see. Maybe they do, and I don't see it, but. Interesting.
Well, I think they're required to contribute some amount per lot, but they wouldn't, yeah, I mean, as our code is right now, they're not required to contribute. Land, dedicate land, so that's, I mean, which is the crux of why we're doing the parks dedication thing in the first place, but.
And I, and isn't it fifty-six hundred dollars?
I think it's. It's seven, is it? Forget.
It was a, it was a substantial amount of money for a lot.
It's eight hundred, I think it was sixty-eight, let me look, Sadie told me recently.
Last I read was sixty-five.
Sixty-five, yes, sixty-five.
For, for perks, for just perks?
Yeah, yep, for a lot, yep.
Permits, all S D Cs, all, all ends probably to the tune of thirty-five to forty thousand dollars per lot, depending on the square footage of the house right now.
Yeah, but the need is huge. I mean, if you like it the way schools are funded, their schools are funded off these lots as well, aren't they? I mean, schools, uh.
No.
Uh, wha- what, uh, what funds do they get? They give so much every time you build a new lot, they give so much money to the school, it goes into. Their, uh, repair, repair fund.
There is a construction excise tax that does, it's not, it, the city does collect it. At the permit stage, but it's not part of the city's S D C fees, it goes to the schools.
Yeah, so then, then the, the general like school fund that, that funds the everyday stuff at schools is, uh. Is established by the state, uh, based on it, what they call A D M, and that's just a flat sum of money that. Every kid in Estacada and Lake Oswego and Hepner and Ione and everywhere else gets the same amount of money per head. Uh, and that's funded from the state general fund, and then property taxes offset that, so if we have more property taxes in Estacada, good on us. But it's just an offset from the state school fund, so it's not, it's not like we get more, we just, it just, that money goes back to the state and then it. Sprinkles over everybody again, so it's a, it's a funny mechanism, um. It's so complicated that it's hard to have a conversation on and, and. Cause there's a lot of questions around it and.
I know, but that's, you know, being a member, I'm a member cruncher, so.
Well, anytime you want to talk about it, talk to Ryan, he's the, he's the guru.
All right, are we done?
I think we're done.
You mean, half hours you guys put in your time today?
Hey, thanks, guys, thanks for all your stuff, I appreciate y'all.
Yeah, we don't have anything else until February, hopefully, and then if not, March.
That's right, we'll let you know.
All right, thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, bye.